Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February tenth, two thousand twenty Board of Education meeting of Evanston Township High School. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. So I think we are all on our technology having a few issues here. The first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we are already at information and we have international travel for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one.
And Robbie Brown will be presenting this item.
Hi, Robbie.
It's once again my pleasure to come before you for the proposed international trips for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year. Just first of all, you'll notice that all of these trips are repeat trips, things that we've done before, so there are no new asks for trips. I also do want to start off by saying that yes, there is a China exchange listed there, but we wanted to make sure that we met the guidelines for the next school year in terms of approval. But of course, we will be closely monitoring and watching U.S. State Department Travel Advisory, CDC warnings, and of course, World Health Organization. And we understand that unless those organizations say it's safe to travel and the staff that are sponsoring that trip understand that they won't travel unless those organizations say that it's safe to travel, of course. But for timelines, we wanted to go ahead and include that on the list this evening. We also, all, any scheduling that's done for that trip will be done in a fully refundable manner as well, so nobody's out anything if we cannot make that trip next school year and have to delay it a year or so. Okay? Just the final thing is that we just want to continue, we continue to strive to make sure all students who express an interest and qualify to go on all trips, that the price of the trip is not standing in their way. We do that through a number of different fundraisers and scholarships and different donations that folks receive. So that's always right at the forefront, and I know our staff that sponsor these trips make that message readily available to our students. So these are the proposed trips and the memorandum that was included in the board packet, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board, any questions? Yes.
I just want to thank you again for what you just said, which is that we really make sure every student who wants to go does go. And as much as I would hate for a trip to be canceled because I know students would be disappointed, I appreciated that the language said if we can't afford for everyone, if everyone can't go, then we're not going.
Yeah.
And I think that's really important because it really is that commitment to equity and that high bar to make sure. So thank you to you and the staff for really making sure that that's true, because every student who wants to go and can, you know, is eligible based on their grades and so forth, should be able to go, and money shouldn't be the barrier. So thank you.
Thank you for that, and I'll be sure to pass that information along to our trip sponsors as well tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, that's very important to us. Thanks. Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, our next item, as Dr. Beavis stands up, is our report on advanced placement.
And we have a great team here coming forward. Dr. Beavis is going to kind of spearhead it. We have Dale Liebforth, we have Josh Brown, we have Tina Lula. So as you'll learn, listening to them, they are deeply immersed in our AP program as well as making sure that students get opportunities and support that they need. So Pete, I'll turn it over to you.
Our AP report. Our AP work is tied to District Goal One, Equitable and Excellent Education. We're very familiar with this goal. The board passed this goal a few years ago, but I really think it's important to ground our work in that quote, right there. We continue to get independent national recognition, Washington Post, educational leadership. We received the MAGNA Award a couple of years ago. The College Board still holds us in the highest esteem. We present annually at the Minority Student Achievement Network, National Conference. We are, continue to be one of the best high schools in the USA, PBS NewsHour, Phi Delta Cap, and advanced placement, our work in advanced placement really has a national One of the things that I always put this slide in here because I think it's very important to educate folks at home and students behind me tonight, public universities and community colleges in Illinois are required by law to award college course credit for AP scores of three or higher. They're actually required to give what is called transcribed credit. So it doesn't say AP Literature and Composition on your transcript, it'll actually say the corresponding course at that public institution in Illinois. It's very important because I don't know if a lot of our students and families know that, but it bears repeating. For the sixth consecutive year, we had more scores of three or higher on AP exams than we did total exams in two thousand ten. And there you go. We had one thousand five hundred and seventy-three AP test scores of three or higher last year compared to one thousand three hundred and eighty-four tests administered in two thousand and ten. We are at capacity in terms of being able to administer those exams. During that time, since two thousand seven, we've seen an eighty percent increase in scores of three or higher. Nationally, a graduate, twenty percent of high school graduates, of all high school graduates, if you take all graduates as the denominator, twenty percent of high school graduates earned a three or higher on an AP exam. At ETHS, it's fifty percent of all seniors who earned a three or higher last year on an AP exam. Access is up one hundred and twenty-three percent since oh-six-oh-seven, scores of three or higher were up again, and each subgroup has made gains, but access and success challenges persist. I showed this when we did our achievement report, and I think it bears just repeating when we look at this report. The question is, is the student qualified to enroll in an AP course at ETHS? You see the yes or no. If the student is truly qualified, then you see the two yeses aligning for a correct. If a student is not qualified, takes the AP class, that's what is called the type-one error. We have very few type-one errors, actually. It'd be nice if we had a few more, then we could see how kids do who weren't prepared, really, to take the class. Unfortunately, though, when you look at our reading data, we have very few type-two errors. AP participation really is fundamentally grounded in your literacy skills. That's what we've come to realize. So while we do expand, we have expanded our participation, literacy remains a challenge for those students who are not enrolled in advanced placement classes. We work diligently on access. Type-two errors do persist. There are fewer than one would think, but they still exist. We have students who do qualify to take, would qualify to take AP exams who choose not to, and that's fine. That's a decision individual students make. And I think for the first time, we're starting to see students make more informed decisions about taking AP classes and the number of AP classes. We've been very intentional in messaging, balancing advanced placement coursework with We've seen a hundred and twenty percent increase in the total number of exams taken since oh-six-oh-seven. We've seen an eighty percent increase of scores of three or higher in that time, and a fifty-six percent increase in scores of four or above. You'll see that a lot of our advanced placement work really predates when the College Board became interested in this, you know, and made this a mission. So we were in very, very much a trailblazer even as early as ten-eleven. You see that six hundred and forty-seven scores of four or higher, three hundred and sixty-one scores of three or higher, or three, rather. This is the, this is the statistic where we look at all of our eleventh and twelfth graders, and that's the denominator. We divide the students in each subgroup who take an AP class by the students in that subgroup in grades eleven and twelve. We limit it to grades eleven and twelve because we realize that that's really when you have the opportunity to take advanced placement courses. So you'll see a flattening and a little bit of a decrease in our access numbers last year in eleventh and twelfth grade. Forty percent of all eleventh and twelfth graders earned a three or higher on an AP exam. Again, that's out of not just the kids who take the test, that's out of every junior and senior last year. We use the percentage change. I want to talk about how we measure change in a population because this comes up from time to time. We use what's called percent change to represent the relative change in size between populations across the time period. So that's why when we say we've seen an X percent increase, that's what we are looking at. One of the things that's helpful probably to ground this, though, is to say, you know, if we go back to two thousand and twelve, we've seen a seventeen percent increase in overall enrollment at ETHS. Our enrollment numbers are up. There's no doubt about it. You can tell each year when we do our opening of school report that those numbers are increasing and continue to grow. So since two thousand twelve, it's been a seventeen percent increase in the student body. Since that time, two thousand twelve, we've seen a twenty-six percent increase in AP enrollment. We've seen a twenty-five percent increase of scores of three or higher. A twenty-one percent increase in scores of four or higher. And that tells a bit of the story, but it doesn't really tell all the story. That just tells you the increase in scores, those are scores in aggregate, you know, those are total scores. But what we really need to do next is kind of look at each subgroup to really see where the growth is and where the growth is not. So again, you have your overall enrollment. We're looking at our black African-American students. In two thousand eleven, twelve school year, we had eight hundred and ninety-two kids. Today, we have, our last year, we had nine hundred and eighty-six students overall. That's a ten point five percent increase. During that time period, we increased our AP students, our black AP students. We had ninety-nine in two thousand eleven, we had one hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent increase. And scores of three or higher, we saw a fifty-nine percent increase. Again, we're looking at changes within that population, right? Actual student numbers. You'll see that we put actual student numbers up. We've been consistent with that. Early on in the work, we followed the Brood Foundation, and the Brood Foundation said that you measure the effectiveness of your AP class by each student who takes it. We also report percentages, but we think it's really important to hold true to those raw numbers as well. Since two thousand eleven, twelve, we saw a thirty-eight percent increase in our Hispanic-Latino numbers, and we saw overall enrollment at the school. We've also seen an increase from eighty to one hundred and twenty-five students, or a fifty-six percent increase in our AP enrollment during that time, and a seventy-one percent increase in scores of three or higher. Again, it's just looking at changes in population and how we're, how we're putting that together. So those numbers look pretty good if we're looking at subgroups. Our white students, overall access and success, we've seen an increase from one thousand three hundred and forty-nine white students enrolled to one thousand six hundred and forty-nine, or a twenty-two percent increase since two thousand eleven, twelve. We've have, we had five hundred and nineteen AP students, white AP students in two thousand eleven, twelve. We have six hundred and twenty-seven, so that's a twenty-one percent increase. Again, that's keeping pace with the twenty-two percent increase overall, and we've seen a sixteen percent increase in threes or higher. We'd like to see that be a little bit higher, but we do understand that there probably is a ceiling effect, given the fact that many of our white students take AP. So that's, that's one possible explanation for that number. Getting back to our more traditional high access and success, you see here what we have in this chart, this is in your report, we see the total number of AP students by year, we see AP students with scores of three or higher, and then we see the percent of those students who scored a three or higher. So of the nine hundred and seventy-two students, six hundred and ninety-four of them earned a three or higher, or seventy-one percent of the students that tested. Now, many students take multiple tests, okay? We're now looking at the total number of tests here. We're looking at the students who are earning AP credit in one or more class. It would be a different report if we did it the other way, the numbers would be a lot different. Total number of AP students, we had one hundred and twenty-eight black AP students last year, fifty-four of them earned a three or higher. Those forty, forty-two percent of the students who tested, those numbers were down a little bit, and I don't have, we can speculate later, but those are what the numbers were last In terms of our Hispanic-Latino students, we had one hundred and twenty-five students enrolled in AP last year, eighty-seven students earned a three or higher in at least one exam, for a total of seventy percent of the students that tested in that subgroup. White students, six hundred and twenty-seven kids tested, four hundred and eighty-one with a three or higher, seventy-seven percent of the subgroup. One of the things that I, we used to talk about the top ten courses, seventy percent of the AP scores and enrollment come from the top ten courses. I stopped doing that because you would need a, the font is too small. I thought it would be helpful just to look at the courses with a hundred-plus students earning a three or higher. I think that's an interesting way to cut the data. You'll see that English Language and Composition, for example, two hundred and six students get a three or higher, sixty-five percent of the students that enrolled in that course. AB Calculus had fifty-seven percent of the students enrolled, or one hundred and twenty-nine. Psych had one hundred and fifty-two students get a three or higher. US History, one hundred and forty-six. Spanish Language and Culture, one hundred and eight, and Biology, one hundred and six. That's a pretty impressive number, one hundred and six Biology students out of one hundred and thirty-three, or eighty percent of the students enrolled in our AP Bio program got a three or higher. That's pretty impressive, Tina. We love that.
She's taking that as a challenge.
She's taking that as a challenge. She's our AP Chem teacher. She's taking that as a challenge. I love that. It's what we do up here. That's why we're Team ASAP, right? We're all pushing each other all the time. I'm just having fun. I think those numbers, our numbers are just phenomenal. Our courses, between fifty and a hundred students earn a three or higher, the reason I'm isolating these tests again is because these are the big-ticket courses that kids are enrolling in. We have many more AP courses than this. Some of them have great success rates, some of them have not-so-great success rates. We could talk about that in a little bit. BC Calculus, again, we had ninety-one students. I'd like to see a few more, maybe get that to a hundred, Mr. Liebforth, that would be wonderful. English Language and Composition was at ninety. We had ninety students earning AP credit, sixty-four percent of the students who took that, that's the senior AP class in English. Chemistry, we had seventy-eight, which is really, really great. Statistics, sixty-nine students earned a three or higher. Spanish Literature and Culture, sixty out of seventy-five, or eighty percent. And Physics C, which is Physics, Calculus, and Mechanics, we had fifty-one of fifty-five, or ninety-three percent of the students earn a three or higher. The last slide here that I'm going to do, I'm going to turn it over to our great team over here after I've already given them a little bit of the business tonight. This shows us really the number of AP students who take multiple APs. We don't really endorse this. This chart comes from the College Board, and essentially, in your packet, it will explain. If you're an AP scholar, I think you take three or more AP tests and get a three or higher on all of those exams. All the way up to the National AP Scholar, which is, which is a large number, you're taking over five AP tests and getting fours or higher on them over the two-year period. The interesting thing is the total number of scholars has grown to three hundred and eighty-six total scholars, and we've seen a lot of growth in that AP Scholar with distinction level. I just want to put that out there. Anyway, we don't necessarily endorse that because that's like, sort of like, the flip side of the well-being piece. So we're like, you know, that's great if that's what you're passionate about, but we in no way are going to push kids to take multiple advanced placement classes, especially taking five or six. That's, that's very unique, and you have to really realize that if you're doing that in one year, that's more than your college load's going to be because you're also taking, you know, a whole bunch of other classes. And in college, you take those classes typically a couple times a week, not every day. All right. Oh, oh, this is my important slide. How did I forget? This is our nearest slide. I love this slide. This is my favorite slide. So one of the questions we're asked oftentimes is, what makes a difference in college persistence? Because really, all this, you know, prepare the kids, have them take the AP test, they're going to do great in college, they're going to get that AP credit. This slide really tells you the correlation between the number of AP tests and the chances of persisting into second semester junior year. So you'll see that even if you take zero AP classes in this cohort of ETHS students, there was a sizable number that, you know, there's a thirty percent chance that you'll persist. But if you really want your numbers really to max out, it maxes around three or four. And it's not three or four in a year, it's three or four over your entire high school transcript. So it's three or four AP courses over really junior and senior year. And we find that that leads to about an eighty percent chance of persisting into a fifth contiguous semester. That means five in a row. So, and that doesn't even tell you what the AP score is, that's just virtue of sitting for the exam and preparing for the exam. So that's how that was calculated. That data is based on three cohorts worth of ETHS graduate data, and it's probably the best talking point we have toward, that goes toward moderation and advanced placement courses. You'll see there's a law of diminishing returns if you take way more than that. And so, again, there it is. Now I'm going to turn it over, and they're going to give me the business.
You forgot your favorite slide.
I just might point out, we have math, English, and science at the table, so I think the core curriculum's well represented.
Thanks. Dale Liebforth, Math Department Chair, also am the AP Success Manager at the school. We usually show this slide and have talked at different points about the different supports we offer for students. We work with a team called Team ASAP. Everyone is on that team. If you're listening tonight at home or here in the room, everybody's a part of the team. Team ASAP stands for Access and Success in Advanced Placement, and we all are encouraging students to take our advanced placement courses, but we're also working to support their success once they get to those classes. So that support starts the year before they even step into the classroom. So I think traditionally, you came the first day, there's an AP class, and it was a scary place to be. We work very diligently the year before and the year during to make sure that it's a safe place where students can feel they belong, and we connect with students on our team. We have about six hundred and fifty students who are in some way connected to Team ASAP, and we make sure that we listen to the voices of the students and we try to create supports. We just looked at, you know, some impressive data and some data that challenges us, and our role as kind of the leaders of Team ASAP or the AP program is to take that data, dig in a little bit, and see where the work needs to be done. Sometimes it ends up in a support that's official, and on the screen, I'm happy to talk about any of the supports that are here. We have done that in the past. We thought we would highlight some different ones tonight, so I will move to the next slide. And we'll highlight a few of our recent initiatives.
Hi, I'm Josh Brown. I'm in English Department. I'm going to talk about a couple of these things. The first one, the Team ASAP lunch meetings are probably the things that we do that have the most students regularly engaged, just because we have, once a month, we have three lunch periods worth of students who can come, any student in the whole school can come to those. We've really focused this year on making sure that each of those lunches has a very directly race and equity-related conversation at its center. One of the things I remember us talking, we were here last year, I remember a lot of discussion about what it would mean to really collect feedback from students who hadn't, well, just hear from students' experiences, especially from students of color in these AP classes who, I guess, what their experiences were like, what their classroom experiences were like. So a lot, you know, some of the themes that these meetings have focused on, the distinctions between, the relationships between inclusion, diversity, and equity, and belonging, overcoming silence within the classroom, welcoming students, stereotype threat around exam-taking, overcoming the deficit model. We've tried to really name some of these themes, and all of these, all of these meetings have included both sort of the presentation of information and the opportunity for students to share their, to share their experiences and for us to report those back to other people who weren't in the meeting, teachers, and, you know, just to try to create that kind of an atmosphere. Then second thing on that list, so Senior AP English, we discovered is a place where there were some students who hadn't previously taken AP classes at all, who were registered for taking Senior AP English but hadn't taken an AP exam before then. So Jody Elliott Shimer, who's one of the English teachers, teaches at CP in senior class, as well as myself, we kind of arranged a set of meetings just for students who had already signed up so that they could get acclimated to what it would be like to take an AP class during their senior year. I think we thought that that might be a group of people that weren't otherwise being reached out to, so that's something we did.
Great. I'm Tina Lula. I teach chemistry, and AP chemistry here. So, well, before I move on to the AP Fair, I did want to say about our lunch meetings. This year, we've seen a really high attendance rate compared to the other years, at least the last couple of years. We're averaging about a hundred students per lunch meeting. So, so I would say that's like a significant increase over the last two years, at least. And then today, I wanted to talk about the AP Fair. That's one of our events that's been happening for many years that, on the previous slide of all the supports, the AP Fair is listed. About two years ago, we did the AP Fair in H Hallway, the way it had been being done for many years, and we had very low attendance. So it was a lot of logistical pieces to get it put together, and we found very few students were coming, and the students who were attending appeared to be students who were taking the AP classes regardless of what happened at the fair. So we really thought it was time to restructure that program or that event. And so last year, we held it in the hub during lunch periods, and we allowed classes to sign up for it. It was successful, and this year, we did it in that same way again, and we saw like a huge increase in our success. We had thirty-two classes attend throughout the day, which was about six hundred, a little more than six hundred students. Primarily, those were freshman and sophomore students, which was great because those are the students who don't know as much. By the time they're juniors and seniors, many of those students already have seen the information somewhere. We did get some junior and senior classes. The seniors were able to offer advice, the juniors, it was great to catch anybody who maybe for whatever reason hadn't gotten the information yet. I think what was really awesome about having that many students at the fair is we could be very particular in delivering the message in the same way to all students. And so we really tried to talk about why you would take an AP course, how you would choose AP courses, and how you would choose a reasonable number of AP courses. Like Dr. Beavis said, we've really focused on the balancing of your number of AP courses with your well-being, so we were able to distribute that to six hundred students in a very uniform way, which was awesome. So not only did that many students get the information, but they all got the information very, like, from us, where we knew they were getting the correct information. And then that day's also awesome because just that night is our Pathways to AP Forum. So again, we kind of continued that, disseminating the same information in a, in the same way so that all students have access to that information. And so those events, we were really excited about how much growth they were able to see after the restructuring. The other thing that we focused on this year are Advisory Board Captains, which we call our ABCs. Those are student leaders of Team ASAP. We open that up to any student who is a part of Team ASAP from freshman through senior, anyone who just expresses an interest in taking on a leadership role. We have about a group of twenty ABCs this year, and we've worked hard to kind of structure their role a little bit more than in the past, so we meet with them twice a month. One of those meetings will be in the morning, right before a lunch meeting, and then most of our lunch meetings are actually run to kind of structure their role a little bit more than in the past. So, we meet with them twice a month. Um, one of those meetings will be in the morning, right before a lunch meeting, and then most of our lunch meetings are actually run by our ABCs. So, during our morning meeting, Josh and I will run the meeting for just the ABCs, and then they'll kind of ask questions and, um, practice a little bit facilitation. And then at the, that same day during the lunch meeting, instead of Josh and I running the meeting, our ABCs will run it. So, it gives them, um, some, like, opportunity to be leaders as well as opportunity to chime in on what they think is the most important in terms of what we cover at the meetings. Um, so, those are two things we wanted to highlight. Oh, the third one, I forgot. Um, last year, we had mentioned at this that we had released a video about AP supports, um, and so, that was kind of a whiteboarding video explaining where our AP students, or any student really, could receive supports throughout this building. Um, this year, we released another video, um, called, "How Many AP Classes Should I Take?" And again, kind of on that theme of helping our students understand the importance of balancing the number of AP classes with, um, their well-being. We were very, um, direct in sending the message of, everybody needs to choose, uh, the right amount of AP classes for them, and here are some things they can consider. Um, that, I think, is, for me, one of the most crucial things we've done this year because I do think some of the pushback that we get in our work with AP is, um, always been, and it's a little frustrating to me, people will always say like, "Well, you tell them to take too many AP classes." "You tell them to tell, take too many AP classes," when we're very seriously not sending that message. Um, so, I really like that we have a video out there that's public for all students, all parents, anyone in the community to see, um, that we are sending a message of being thoughtful. And yes, for a few select students, they should be taking a ton of AP classes. But for most students, they need to be very thoughtful about how many to take, and, um, we try to give some very sound advice on that.
So, that's a response, um, that we, we're trying to give whenever we hear, um, a complaint, a concern, a miscommunication, we, we try to communicate that out. And that might be through the AP agreement that we do yearly. That creates conversations with students and their families, students and their counselors, students and their teachers, students and each other. Um, the video last year, "How Do I Get Support?", we wanted to just lay that out there. And then, most recently, um, just this piece about well-being and AP. So, you can see that video or all of our videos, um, or any of this information on tinyurl.com backslash Team ASAP. Um, I don't know if it's gone viral yet, but the, the script writing by Josh Brown from our English department and, uh, Tina's quite the voice actor as well, so I'm, I'm sure that will be blowing up. But, um, it's just a great way to put the message out there, um, I guess, from the mouths of the team, um, so we can, we can get some facts out there. That's really helpful, um, to our students in a creative way. Um, we're also working to reach beyond kind of the AP program. Uh, one quick example of that, uh, we have our educational foundation board. Uh, Michaela Brown, a member of Team ASAP, um, is currently sitting on that. So, we look for ways to get, um, our students in Team ASAP involved, not only in our advisory board, um, but to reach beyond the team as well. Um, another thing that we've been working on for a number of years is just the demographic completion, the students we caught the bubbling, you know, initiative, if you will. Um, students had to put their demographic information down on exam day, and we know how detrimental that could be to, um, their performance on, on the AP exams. So, several years ago, we moved that off of the exam date and we did it earlier, and we had, you know, a thousand, almost a thousand kids, um, that we had to run through bubbling. Well, this year, um, Carrie Levy and her team, um, helped the sixty-nine AP teachers enroll their classes and do that information, the registration for the exam and their, their demographics attached to that in the fall. Uh, we had to do some collaboration with the college board, uh, to help us, um, make that happen smoothly, but we were able to get all of our students registered. Um, and part of that, too, is, is just the actual, um, billing of the exams as well. If our students are on free reduced lunch, their exams are paid for. If they're not, uh, we have different ways, um, to help them, so it's not, you know, one big bill in the spring, right before AP exams, when other, um, funding comes as well. So, both of those are connected ideas that, um, are great ways to help our students, um, kind of in a behind-the-scenes way with regard to their success in the AP program. And we always have said, the earlier we can inform students, the better. So, we, we talk about the AP fair and reaching many freshmen and sophomores, but we wanna reach down, um, to our middle schools and elementary schools. And as my friend Bethery says, she'd love to go back to, uh, the hospital when the kids are born and pass out little flyers to the families as they leave. So, um, but we'll start with the middle schools. Uh, we, we had been going to Shoot to work with their eighth graders, not only to talk about AP classes. I think we say AP, 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 but it's really about, you know, how can you really reach your full potential? Um, and that's as a person, that's as a student, and we've found that the eighth graders have a lot of excitement around our visits. So, last year, um, several years ago, we started at Shoot and then we built into Nichols. So, last year, we were able to see all the eighth graders at Shoot and Nichols, and this year, we reached out to Haven, and Haven is excited to have us come as well. So, I believe we're finalizing a date in April to go see the eighth graders from Shoot, Nichols, and Haven, and really to give them the message about, you know, reaching your full potential and then some specifics with regard to our AP program and, and what a transition, a smooth transition might look like into the high school. And, um, that includes, I think we have some photos, um, that includes a presentation in the auditorium. Um, and so, we did that at Shoot and Nichols. Again, we're adding Haven this year. And then we have breakout rooms where our advisory board captain, captains or other members of our, our team, uh, connect with students in a classroom setting in a teacher's own classroom, and they ask questions from, "Can we chew gum at the high school?" to, you know, um, "Here's what I wanna be when I grow up. What, what academic classes, what AP classes do I need to, to be connected with?" And so, it's a chance for our students just to be real, um, you know, with the kids there, um, who are super excited in the spring to be coming to the high school and just continue that excitement as, as they come here.
I think the eighth graders' most common question to our ABCs is about a gym uniform. I think that's the one that really feels like can set them on a path of success.
Um, so, those are a few of the highlights, um, but we wanted to have an opportunity to answer some questions that you may have, so we'll open it at this time.
Very exciting, very exciting. Uh, Jude, you have, did you say?
Thanks for your work, you all. Um, I really think the district has done transformative work with access. Um, I'm very, very concerned about the success when you look at the subgroups as it relates. I mean, we have more black and brown students taking AP courses and rigor in general. Um, but there's a glaring disparity in students scoring three and higher, um, on these tests. And, again, so, we're, we're really raising the bar in terms of access, but now I really think we need to double down on figuring out what is, why is there such a disparity? Um, so, like Pete, you said earlier that literacy is one indicator. So, let's just say the students are AP material, they have the skill sets they need to be in those classrooms, but why is there such a disparity? And what are those conversations? Um, 'cause I think, like, Team ASAP, I mean, the, the, the notion that you, you all are talking to these students and, and trying to get data from them, um, I think it's great, it's transformative as well. But what is, what are we learning? And how, how is what we are learning informing practice in the classroom? And can you provide some examples of what have you learned in terms of what may be causing this disparity? Um, that we have, you know, what type of adjustments have we, is there any example? And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's just a glaring disparity. And I'm just kinda wondering, like, what are we finding out? What is it telling us? What's, what sense do we have?
So, I can speak from my class, right? I teach AP chemistry. Um, and what I have noticed, um, and from talking to my students, is, um, what times work for them in terms of getting help? Um, and so, when I come in, for, for example, the AP Academy, that's an event that we run as Team ASAP, typically, my students of color are not present, despite me doing my best to invite them, individually inviting them, it's not a time that works for them, so they're not there. So, that's not a time I can offer them help. Um, this year, I have really focused hard on offering lunch period help. So, because of my role in Team ASAP, actually, I have fourth and fifth period as my free periods, and I have been a lot more successful in getting my students of color in for help during those times, um, that are built into their school day schedule. And I'm finding that they're happy to give up either their lunch period or their free period, whatever it is, to come work. Um, so, I get some students who are coming, um, two, three times a week, or the student who just remembers that I'll be there and will drop in as necessary. But I'm definitely, this year, seeing that I am able to meet with my students of color more often than I have in the past few years.
Thanks for that. I just have a follow-up. Like, any idea in, um, communicating with parents? Like, if they say that, that those time slots aren't good for them, I'm wondering why? And this, you don't have to answer it now, I'm just wondering because, um, I mean, all of these students are within a certain radius. It's, it's, it's not gonna vary too greatly. Um, so, are there other factors relating to, you know, their household? That's, you know, responsibilities in the morning or, you know, for us to just dig a little deeper? Because if it's just a function of them accessing the help, um, you know, we just...
From what students have mentioned to me, um, it's sports in, on a Saturday morning, for example. Um, work, when I ask for after-school time, um, many of my students say they have work. Um, so, those are the two things that Babe mentioned off the top of their head. Yeah.
I can, I can give you a quick math example as well. I mean, calc is, is one of the ones that's up there that, that has the disparities that, that you mentioned. Um, we've been doing work with Stanford University, um, you know, on, you know, anxiety stereotype threat, which we're not ready to report out yet on, but we will, um, soon. Um, I know that we found for many of our students, it's just, um, kind of the, the level, the difficulty of problems they've been doing, and, and the kind of crux of that is in Algebra II, um, primarily sophomores in Algebra II. We have some juniors there as well, but sophomores who will eventually take calc. Um, so, we've been really working to, um, kind of build up the challenge in, in our Algebra II class, not only reinforcing basic skills, but also making sure they're doing problems that'll take longer than a minute, two minutes. So, we, we've found that not only just straightforward Algebra II skills, but also just the depth of the problem. So, we've been looking at our Algebra II regular class in particular and how we can really challenge students at a greater level because when they're seniors, they need to be able to tackle a more challenging problem. Um, they need to be able to have those fundamental Algebra II skills. So, we've also done review sessions outside of it, but we've tried to weave into the, we have them for forty-two minutes a day, so how can we weave into the school day? Um, and this year, we've done strategic, um, kind of SAT prep, if you could call it that, Khan Academy, content review, however you wanna look at it, but we've really been hitting the core Algebra II skills, and we feel that, that'll be beneficial to the students as they progress through the pathway, as they take an SAT exam, as they take, um, the AB Calcus exam. So, we've really kinda hit hard, um, on Algebra II, and we hope that'll pay off for all students, but in particular, our students of color, um, in reinforcing the basic skills, but also kind of the depth of the problem that they're gonna see on, in their AP class and on the AP exam, and, and ultimately will, will hopefully help them with some of our other connected initiatives to help them be more successful.
I have just two things to add, Dale. One is that we're in the first year when Dale just kinda glossed over the online registration for our students, uh, which was a battle, uh, with the college board to get our kids to be able to be registered on time with no late fees 'cause college board wanted to assign late fees right away. Uh, it really didn't necessarily do the most thoughtful rollout, uh, of the material. But part of the reason why they pushed so hard was to get kids enrolled in online modules. So, now, students have online modules through the college board to supplement the curriculum they're receiving here at ETHS. They're content-specific modules aligned to the AP test. Uh, so, students have that, and that's a new way to prepare. Again, very much in its infancy, but it's there. Uh, so, that's one thing to keep in mind, and we're gonna monitor that and see how, you know, see how good it is and what we can do, uh, in terms of increasing our, uh, usage of that resource. The second thing, though, uh, is that, to go back to the nearer chart for one second, and one of the things we've always said, it is really important to get a three or higher. It's huge. But this chart right here just says by virtue of taking, uh, the course and taking the test, whether you get a one, two, or three, that it increases your persistence level. So, while on the one hand, the access thing is great and very su, very important in terms of this chart, we wanna get that three number up for our students so that, so that they can go, and if they go to a college, a public college or university in Illinois, that they can start racking up some credits, uh, that are, that's transcribed and that can save students money on the, on the, on the backend. So, again, we're doing a whole bunch of things, but I just thought it was important to bring that full, full circle.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, one more aspect, I just wanna emphasize again, classroom climate is, when I type up summaries of our lunch meetings, just what did students say, what sorts of, and, and as many students I have a conversation with have as many different experiences of classroom climate, it's very difficult to generalize about the qualitative field that they'll report. But I, I will just say that there's any number of students that will talk about feeling singled out in a classroom, feeling ignored in a classroom, feeling both singled out and ignored, which is, you know, um, that's two things that come to mind is coming up in a lot of different forms in whatever question we ask, that's the way that that comes out. Um, so, how to organize? I mean, one thing we're really trying to do is create a loop whereby when students share that information, you know, being communicated relatively anonymously, but just making sure that it's clear to teachers so that every teacher of AP sees that a good number of students said that. Um, because I do think it's just hard to continually make sure that those students are heard about their experiences, um, because I do think as a teacher, I know that's a, it's, that's a more difficult thing to address. It feels much more adaptive than technical. It feels much more, um, qualitative. And I, so I, just, just making sure that it's regularly collected and somehow presented so that people can listen to it and make their own sort of pedagogical decisions is something that, that I'm trying to do.
Thanks for being transparent about that, and I think that's the belonging that Dr. Witherspoon talks about so often. Um, thank you, thank you.
Yes, it is, and it's, and it's, and it is, like you said, it's hard to address because people are people and they mean well, and these are teachers working with students. So, um, I, I just was, when, when you talked about that race and equity conversations and, and what the kids were saying and how well-attended that, that session is, I wondered if those things came up and, and how much access you have to the teachers to talk to them about what the kids said and how often, you know, time is such a factor for students and for, for faculty, like, how do you get people together and how do you give them feedback? And, and, and really help them, um, be ready to look at their, um, their connections with students and, and still affirm them. I mean, this is, this is the crux of what we do here, right? I mean, this is what it's all about. We talk about make, giving these students access. Uh, we want them to have access, we want them to be successful, and we wanna reach down possibly, like you said, Dale, and, and look at curriculum and, and holes and try to fill those in so that they're ready. Uh, so, we want them to be ready, and we also want the staff to be ready to receive them. So, it's, it is really complicated. So, I really appreciate this conversation. Monique has a question.
Yeah, I, I have two points. First of all, I definitely appreciate the fact that our numbers, um, for students of color have grown since 2011. So, to, you know, think about that, ninety-nine students in 2011 versus, you know, where we're at right now. Um, and so, of course, atmosphere and a, and a sense of belonging is a very, um, serious component to being a part of that experience. I always ask the same question, though. Um, how many black students in particular, but students of color, have signed up for AP and dropped out? Because I, I'm always concerned, they're not the ones coming to the lunch meetings, right? Sharing this experience, those are the ones that are trying their hardest to hold on and sharing the experience that you have, but somewhere in between signing up and taking that test, um, you know, we, we may lose a few or have lost a few. So, I'm, I'm always interested in knowing that and what information have we gathered from there? And then based on that, what conversations are you having among yourselves to say, you know, here are the things we need to really focus on or dive deeper in because this keeps happening, and it keeps happening, um, with this group?
So, I have some numbers. That's probably the only applause I'm gonna get off of this, this tagline, uh, but I'll take it. Uh, we had, uh, We had, uh, we had ten students, ten black students drop AP last year. For, and the way we did this is we looked at students who were enrolled in AP first semester last year, and we compared that to students who were enrolled in AP at the end of the semester too. So that gives us the beginning of the school year to the end. Uh, we had ten students drop AP. Uh, and then for Latino students, we had, Dale, I can't do the math. Can you do the math?
Sixteen percent is probably easier.
Oh, okay. Sixteen percent. We had a hundred and fifty-three Latinx students, and we ended with a hundred and twenty-eight. So that's, that's a bigger number of drops. That's sixteen percent of the students who enrolled. I'd see, but I can't, I can't do the math off the top of my head, guys. I'm an English teacher, but what I'll tell you is this.
You're under pressure.
It's twenty-five. Thank you, Dale. That's why he's right here. Um, overall, um, overall, we had, uh, four percent, four point seven percent drop rate in advanced placement courses. Now, I don't have any other courses to compare that to. Um, they didn't just drop AP and, and leave it at the semester. Typically, it's a level change. Uh, so you take, if you're taking like an AP, uh, language and composition class, you can drop down to three, you know, junior English. Uh, so you're not leaving the curriculum entirely. You're changing levels typically. But those were the numbers, and those included all of our juniors and seniors who were enrolled last year.
And I would, to add to that, a lot of those, um, I mean, there was ten black students, uh, primarily students of color who are seniors dropping. It's often calculus. Um, and they often move into our dual credit class, Intro to Finite Math. Um, and I have conversations about, you know, what, why, why is it happening? And it's a variety of different reasons, but when themes develop, that's when we work on whether it's belonging in the classroom or preparedness or, or whatever. Oftentimes, I'll find the student, um, had gotten Ds the previous year in pre-calc and wanted to challenge themselves and take an AP class. Um, and that was, the struggle was too great. Um, and so we then placed them into a college-level class, you know, dual credit with Oakden. Um, that's still a challenging class taught at a high level. Um, and, and you don't wanna fault that student for challenging themselves, but there's a variety of different stories. But I would say as a department chair and, and the other departments as well, many, if not all, of those students are coming through and we're hearing those stories. And so just kind of collecting that information as a department chair team, um, you know, what's, what's really happening? What are some of the themes that are coming up and trying to, to go after those? But it, you, we do get to hear the individual story. Um, and in, in many cases, it, it does make sense to make that move. Um, but it also points to changes that need to be made at the school.
Thank you.
I think, um, one other thing, from the teacher's perspective, I've found that if I know that the student is considering dropping, I'm able to intervene in a way that could potentially stop that drop. Um, the time that I am not able to do that is if I have no idea the student is considering dropping. So I've tried to do something where the first couple of weeks of class, I constantly making jokes about, oh, you didn't get this problem? Don't worry, you don't need to drop. Or to like bring up that idea of dropping in a way that they feel like they can approach me about it. Um, also, you know, I've mentioned it to my department chair, who's really great. If she hears wind of someone dropping or wanting to drop or speaking to their counselor about dropping, then she'll let me know. Because again, sometimes I'm blindsided where students dropped and I had no idea they were thinking about it, so I couldn't be a part of that conversation. But as long as I can be a part of that conversation, then I'm able to provide some confidence to the student or at least have the conversation, um, like Dale talked about, to, to find out like what the story is and is that an appropriate drop?
And, you know, we, we put the, the two line kind of slide deck there of all the supports that we have. One of the supports that we have is AP Fall Academy, which was built around this idea of if you can make it through the first, from the mouths of our students, if you can make it through the first two or three weeks, you're gonna be okay. It might be a, a challenge at the beginning, but oftentimes when they come to my office or they talk to, to Tina or Josh, um, they already have a signature from a parent, you know, and, and the whole list. And it's kind of like the last step in the process, so it's hard to convince a student at that point. So just, uh, we've talked in, in our last meeting even about reframing the Fall Academy event. How can we do it differently? Cuz, um, we're not always getting the right students there. Um, we're not always, um, getting the right messaging there. So how can we reframe that event? Cuz it was literally built the second weekend, Wow Kid Academy, you know, just let's help you over that, that first hill, and then everything, you know, won't be fine after then. But, you know, we'll at least have made it through that initial challenge, and then we can build on that. But I, I think, um, you know, as, as bright and shiny as it looks in that slide right there, uh, many of these events need to be tweaked, and that's one of them that we feel, um, and I think Tina brought it up. So perhaps the Tina that, you know, we, we can't keep doing the same thing when it's not working. Uh, we, we need to, to change it to get better results. So I appreciate the continued challenge from, from the team on, on things that, that need to be changed, um, in benefit of our students.
Enter, can I, one more, I, I'm, or do you wanna move on?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Josh.
The, again, not to just repeat myself, but the, the classroom climate issue, I think I've experienced this mostly just in talking with students that have been in my class. Students will express their willing, their, their desire to drop as centered around a perceived lack of skill. And a conversation will come around and, you know, that's not, in my perception anyway, the student has sort of decided that they're lacking a skill when in fact what's going on is something about how it feels to be in a class on a daily basis. And so when we can talk through with them and say, no, you did very well in this essay, you know, well, I just assumed that the problem was that I wasn't able to hang as opposed to that this was an unpleasant experience to be navigating. And, and how to, how to sort of equip students with that vocabulary so that they can speak to their experience instead of placing it onto this narrative about themselves as lacking in something. Um, so that's.
Yeah.
Which is what students do, right? We know that they internalize systemic things often. I did actually have a question.
Yeah, can I hear from Echo?
Oh, of course.
She had a question.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, as though like accessibility is much greater for people of color in AP classes, the disparity in AP classrooms is still very apparent to students. Um, and I think that I just wanted to remind people that like, it's still a large part of conversations that students don't feel that the climate is normalized to be a person of color in AP classes. Um, and that it is still unusual to have, um, you know, majority people of color in, in AP class. And I've experienced AP classes with having no black students, um, in my AP Lang and A Push class. Um, and so that is still very much, um, a present issue for students.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Pat, thank you.
I, actually, Josh, where you just left off is where I was gonna go back to, which is the, um, culture issues, um, that you, you were talking about and the recognition of them. And then the feedback that you said once teachers have that information that they can integrate into their pedagogy. And I guess my question is, I mean, you're doing so much, so I'm just awed by this report every year. But I guess I wonder what more we can do as opposed to in what you described or as I heard it, fairly informal, like I learned this, I integrate, I told other teachers about it, and it helped. That, is there more that we can do with that? And more to the point you just made about those conversations where this, you learn that the student is internalizing what is not their issue? So it feels like there needs to be more there with helping the adults hear that information and know what to do with it when they do hear it. So is there, and again, I know you're doing a lot, but are there examples that you can talk about or more systemic things? Maybe Pete, you've kind of, I know you think about these things all the time.
I do. Um, one of the things I think we could do, we haven't done it yet, but you know, we've been doing curriculum reviews for very specific courses. But it is possible to convene, uh, focus groups using the curriculum review team to look at the AP experience and do that in a, in an affinity space, uh, just like we do our curriculum reviews. And then what we could do is issue that report to our AP teachers, and they could, you know, see it, and we could have some action steps that would come out of that. That would be a way to have the broadest sort of impact, I think, uh, is really to capture those stories. We have a team that, that does that, uh, and we could certainly deploy them, uh, with that in mind. Uh, we could talk about identity. We could talk about, uh, stereotype threat. We could talk about, uh, all the things that have surfaced. And we could ground that actually in the work that, uh, that we're doing in the Team ASAP lunches. So, uh, you know, that could, that's a good jumping off point, in fact. Uh, we could bring folks in and start that process. I think that's a really.
I love that.
That would systematize it for sure.
That's a great suggestion. Yes.
But, um.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would say any opportunity, it's, it's seven different departments, you know, thirty-four courses, sixty-nine teachers. So as much as I say, you know, I work with all those teachers, I'm the math department chair. I have thirty-six teachers, all the department chairs, so we're working through the department chairs with the teachers. So I, I think any opportunity that we could have moving forward to have that full group together, um, you know, it, cuz it, it mostly is informal conversations or working through a chair to a course team, working with a teacher on the course team to spread it out. So I think any kind of strategic, um, you know, kind of AP department, if you will. Um, you know, I, I think that, that might even extend out to some of our dual credit classes as well. But how, you, the students are taking these college-level classes. How can you kind of come together as a faculty team, um, to support them in a more strategic way? Uh, we've talked about that, you know, what, what opportunities lie in terms of time, PD, you know, that's something that we need to look into. I think the curriculum review presents an, an interesting idea as well.
I have, I have a quick question about, um, the support, going back to not that slide, but the other slide that was more of a list of supports. Um, are you collecting demographic data on, you know, the attendance and the engagement of students in each of these initiatives? And is there a way to kind of drill down? Because, you know, obviously, offering is not the same as engaging. And, um, it might be interesting to see, or it'd be helpful for us to see perhaps how, you know, what your success rate is in terms of support when you break it down by demographic and how, you know, what are these different support initiatives? Who are they reaching? And what does that look like?
I, I don't have the data for you, um, but anecdotally, um, our lunch meetings have been much more diverse. We do have the, the roster, so we could, we could run that information. Um, Senior AP English, I, I believe had a focus on, you know, students of color, particularly black male students. Um, the AP Fair, the, the fact that we're bringing, um, that teachers were bringing their classrooms there allowed for a more diverse crowd in the room. Uh, it wasn't like come if you wanna see it. So when we had it in H Hall, we had, uh, you know, majority of the students were white students. Uh, we're already planning, they were just picking which one, so we had a more, um, diverse group there. The advisory board, um, has, uh, representation that's similar to, um, you know, the demographics at E T H S. Uh, so I, I think as you go down, anecdotally, you know, we're there, we're reaching, uh, when we go to the middle school visits, we're reaching all the eighth graders. There's not a so, a select group there. Um, so I, I think we're, we're doing what we can to try to, try to reach more students. And I think, you know, if there's any specific, you know, kind of data to dig into there, we could do it. We haven't yet looked at, for example, um, this student is a member of Team ASAP. How successful are they in their AP class? Which would be an easy-ish, uh, data point to measure. Like, is the Team ASAP support helping those students be more successful? We think so. We haven't looked at that in, in an organized fashion yet.
Or like what is the demographic breakout of your ABCs, for example? And how many students of color are being invited or supported in leadership roles, for example? And mentoring other students of color perhaps, or, I mean, those are just.
Yeah, we're, I think we're very careful when, when we, we, we pick the team, when we pick the panels, that they're representative. I, I think the ABCs are incredibly representative.
Okay.
Particularly with, with regard to, you know, students of color.
Okay.
I also think Dale mentioned me pushing pretty hard to transform our, um, AP Academy event, and that was the driving force behind that. Because, um, even without running exact numbers, it's apparent that that isn't reaching, um, our students of color. That event is not currently reaching our students of color. Um, and so that's why I was pushing hard to reform at the event for next year. So that was the driving force behind that.
Gretchen.
Hi. I, um, I have sort of two groups of questions. Um, the first group of questions relates to the, the report, um, and so I'm gonna knock that off first. And I really wanna be careful not to take away from what I think is extraordinary work that you're doing, that you've reported on, not just tonight, but in many previous years. Really going back to the, um, ten years ago, changing how we enroll students in their freshman year in the humanities classes. I mean, that was really sort of the beginning of what led to this, and I don't wanna lose sight of that. Um, because I think it's, it's really extraordinary where we've come from that time. So I, I, I wanna thank you. I wanna emphasize that we have done really amazing work and we have made great growth. However, I really, really think that, um, that sort of praise overlooks, um, exactly where we are right now. And I think it's revealed most clearly when we look at the charts that are in the report, um, which very carefully look at the number of students who are taking AP exams, the number of students who are scoring three and above, the number of students who are scoring four and above as a percentage of the total student body. Um, I think the total numbers are, it's not that they're irrelevant, but our school population of, has increased, and that is necessarily going to lead to an increase in students taking the exams and scoring threes and fours. So to me, the most relevant charts are these and the charts that, that identify the percentage. And I wanna be really clear, when we look at this, um, uh, the second chart, it's the chart on who's taking the exams, eleventh and grade eleven and twelve students, um, and the scoring three or above. If we look at, if we isolate black and African-American students in particular, that number has gone down a lot, ten percent. Those are just students taking one or more AP exams. So we were at a high, and the high was in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and it held in twenty-fifteen, sixteen at thirty-seven percent of those students. And we are now at twenty-seven percent. That's not success. And I, I, you know, I know you put it in the chart, but I wanna be really clear. When we just identify total numbers of exams taken, the number is bigger because we have more students. Um, but as a percentage of the student body, we're not serving our black and African-American students any better. And in fact, the number's worse. And, and similarly, then we have the scores of three and above. Um, it's, it's a smaller bobble. It was a high of fourteen percent. No, I'm sorry, fifteen percent in twenty-sixteen, seventeen. Now we're down to eleven. So it's sort of less dramatic there. Um, you know, and frankly, all the numbers have dropped for, as a percentage of student body. They, all the numbers for white, uh, Latinx, um, uh, black, African-American students, they've all come down for total numbers as a percentage of the student body. And I just think it's, it's extraordinarily important that we are really clear about that because I think to suggest, to do this total number stuff, um, really obscures the fact. And I, I, I think it makes it more difficult for us to have a very direct conversation about what we're not getting done to move the numbers. Um, not just to increase them, but to stop this, what, what is actually a drop. And I, I think, you know, obviously you can isolate by courses, you know, there's, there's the variation within the courses. And I think you're doing a good job of, of tackling that. But I just, it's a real, as you all know, um, a pet peeve of mine, but I think it's an important one. And I wanna be really clear, I was an English major. I'm definitely encountering some stereotype threat of myself. I had a very negative high school math experience. So looking at these numbers makes my head wanna explode. I am entirely sympathetic to this discussion, and I think it's fascinating about, um, in particular, students who you believe to have the skills to get the course done but are lacking the confidence or some other, um, internal sense. I experienced it, so I think that's, that's a huge, huge point. And I just wanna point it out, having this discussion is bringing it all back. Pete, you look like you wanted to respond.
I, I just had, I just had one, um, item that is a sobering item, and it's probably a, a really good preview, uh, for our joint board meeting.
Good.
And it helps explain these numbers in a way that I really didn't wanna go into necessarily this evening, but I think I can bridge into that.
You can blame it on me.
Continue this on the next meeting. But, uh, for students, um, who take an AP course, uh, who are, I, I disaggregated by race. I looked at what is the grade equivalent on the star for students who take an AP class versus students who do not in grades eleven and twelve. versus students who do not in grades eleven and twelve? And what I found out was that black, African-American students who take AP classes are at grade level when they take the AP class. Okay? So that's like grade ten-five or whatever, you know, like tenth grade, fifth month or whatever. They're right, ready to go. For students who don't take an AP class in their junior or senior year, their reading level on average is seventh grade, first month. So that's a big difference right off the bat. And our Latino students, their average star score for, if they don't take an AP class is seven point four. And it's a reading, when I said earlier on that reading appears to be one of the biggest barriers in literacy, it is. And we're, I don't know how to...
So what you're saying is those kids really could not take an AP class and be successful. It would be difficult.
Well, they might be able to, but it's going to be very difficult to access the content in US history and in language and literature, literature and composition with a reading level of seven point one. It precludes an opportunity, is what it does.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, and I don't want to put that label there either, but...
But, but that is an indicator, though. I didn't anticipate the data would be this stark when I looked at it. I said, "Maybe it's reading," you know, you don't know. But it really is, reading is a, is a, reading has a profound impact on your opportunities. And it forecloses many academic opportunities for our students. And, and just to add to that, you know, our white students who take an AP class, their reading level is, you know, eleventh, twelfth grade, it's right where, you know, where it should be. And if they don't take an AP class, it's in ninth grade, they have a ninth grade reading level. So there's like three years difference there.
And I just want to point out that the chart you're seeing mirror what you have seen from District Sixty-Five the last six straight years. I have talked about this before in public, and I'm going to talk about it again. Every single year for six consecutive years, reading scores have gone down in District Sixty-Five. And the current juniors, only twenty percent of the African-Americans entering the high school were proficient in, on grade level in reading. And we've talked about it, and we've talked about it, and we've talked about it. But there are a lot of correlates to the charts that you're seeing and, and where the reading levels of the students who've been coming to ETHS have been for several consecutive years. That's why we have a joint reading goal. That's why the high school is so adamant that children need to be taught to read. And when you don't teach them to read, you are disadvantaging them in many, many different ways. And it shows up in what Dr. Beavis was just pointing out.
I could not agree more. And having written that joint reading goal, the first ever joint board goal, I am, and it's been on the books now for five or six years. And we don't yet have a good way to track it. And I'm very much looking forward to what we're going to hear all about at the joint school board meeting later this month. Because that's going to be the time to really get there. And, and I'm, I've been waiting for it for five years, so hopefully we'll hear more. But just to, to my point about this percentage of the student body thing, I want to just go to the last section on exam scores of four or higher. It's in a little, it's the very last little bar chart on your, in your report on page, hmm? I don't know, because it doesn't have page number. But it's after that chart, I think. It's, it's like more the, the graphy one. This is a chart that doesn't have the percentage. And so we talk about a fifty-six percent increase in the number of scores of four or higher. But when you actually do this as a percentage of student body, and you compare 2011, twelve to 2019, 2011, twelve, we had twenty-seven percent of our scores of, of four and above. And, and that percentage was twenty-eight percent in 2019. So there's really, I mean, that's sort of a holding steady kind of number. And it's not an increase. We have an increase in the total numbers of fours. We don't have an increase in the total number of fours as a percentage of student body. Okay, maybe one percent.
Well, no, I...
Is that...
The reason we did this slide here was we looked at the change in growth in population. We've seen a seventeen percent increase in overall population. So that's, that's from 2011, twelve, seventeen percent growth. We've seen a twenty-six percent growth over that time in AP enrollment.
I'm just talking about four, and I'm isolating the four and above slide.
Right, so it's twenty-one percent to seventeen.
Yeah.
It's seventeen percent growth as, in demographic population.
If you just do the, if you just do as a percentage of student body, I've got nine hundred and eighty-six scores of four and above in 2019 over a total student body of three thousand five hundred and fourteen. And again, open to correction here, my math and my numbers could be wrong. But I get, you know, I get a different number, and then I run it for 2011, twelve, and I do the same percentage calculation, and it is almost identical. We can leave it.
I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the point that every time I look at that chart, I have the same thought. And, and I think three or four years ago, we said, "Who are the students?"
Right.
"Who aren't in the class?"
Right.
And we looked at each one of the hundred and fifty students that were on the list and, and what, what, what was their pathway, you know, to get to junior, senior year.
Yep.
We have yet to do that again, but it's in our minds to do that again. Like, who are the students who are not in the AP classes? If you talk at the, about the access number. I don't know if it's that we've had two large classes come in that skews the percentages. I wonder when they're juniors and seniors, if, as, as they become AP, you know, eligible, I guess, as their juniors and seniors are able to take that?
Right.
If the percentages will change again. So, you know, I'd have to dig into like the junior, senior percentages to directly answer your question. I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I don't want to take away from your point. And, and I think to that point, I think it's again, time to look at the, each individual student who is not taking one AP class. Because if our goal is to have every student take an AP class before they graduate, right now it's three out of four. Who are the students that are the one?
Right. Well, you really have two separate problems. You've got this universe of kids who, as Pete has just identified, are not reading at grade level. Not just not at grade level, but they're like maybe three grade levels behind. And so that's one difficult question. And I think that's part of the question we're going to address at the joint school board meeting. And then you have this separate question of kids who are reading at grade level, and for whatever reason, are not taking the AP course. So we're, I mean, those are very different problems and issues and discussions.
And so I think digging into, I, I always appreciate when we dig into each individual student and hear their story. And I think we, we, we need to go back to that again, as we did several years ago. Because we got a lot of, we got a lot of good information that we could make change from.
Okay, so one final little category of question, and I'll try and keep this really short. There was a very timely EdWeek article that crossed my desk, and I'm happy to send around to the rest of the board. I think I fired it off to Pete at about five o'clock today, which I know was too late. But it just, it gave some takeaways from the AP data that has been released nationwide, which I found very interesting. And so one of the takeaways was that thirty-eight point nine percent of graduates across the United States took at least one AP exam last year. And that number is not, is higher than us. And I think we should be, you know, we should be at least aiming to beat that national average. That was up, in their case, from twenty-six percent of students a decade earlier who took the AP nationwide. And we are at around twenty-six percent now. So I, I, you know, I just, I'm curious about whether we look at this, whether we care about it, whether we consider it sort of a, you know, I know when we look at some of our other results, we compare ourselves to the Illinois results or the nationwide results on things like the ACT, for example. So I don't know if that's of relevance or interest.
I didn't get to read the article. But was it twenty-six percent of the entire school body?
Well, the way it was phrased in this particular article, it was one point two five million students, which they described as thirty-eight point nine percent of graduates. So I don't know, you know, a little fuzzy, right?
And see, I know that we have, I mean, as Pete highlighted earlier, we're working around the country with other districts. Some districts have had an AP class that's more of an entry-level AP class for all of their freshmen.
Yes, right.
And we work towards meaningful experiences in AP for our juniors and seniors primarily.
Right.
So that's a difference in philosophy sometimes. But again, I don't want to make it, for kids not taking AP classes, I want to get to the heart of it.
Well, the other interesting takeaways from this article were about efforts by the AP organization to make themselves more relevant, to your point.
Right.
And coming up with alternatives to this sort of a test score as the only measure. And talking about having a portfolio essay and a capstone project. And I assume that this is the kind of thing that you're aware of and that we are thinking about as we consider ways to move away from the test score as a measure of our students, as an exclusive measure of our students. I mean, is that...
Yes.
Are we paying attention to what the AP organization is doing around that?
Yeah, and we've, I mean, we've been in talks with even David Coleman at some points, with the portfolio course, for example. You know, say, "Could we do, you know, an African-American history course? Would that, you know, be eligible for that?" So we've talked about some ways to have more meaningful courses for our students here and get AP credit for it, have it in the, the AP framework, for sure.
Dale, for the last several years, you've given me a statistic. What percentage of our graduates walking across the stage have taken at least one AP class? Ballpark it, I know you can come very, very close. What, what was that for the last graduating class?
Yeah, I think it was seventy-six percent. I've been saying three out of four, so, you know...
Seventy-six percent of our students who walked across the stage
So then we're going to beat that.
One or more AP class, yeah. So, so I'd have to look at what numbers they're coming up with. But I mean, we are like so beyond that.
Yeah, so it's three out of four take. And then this, this slide that Pete brought back up, fifty percent half get a three or higher. So as you're shaking hands, every other kid that Dr. Wethespoon is shaking hands with got a three or higher, got a proficient score. I think fifty percent of our kids go to school in the state of Illinois. I mean, I'd be interested in digging into the numbers a little bit. But, but again, I heard your first point, and I'll, I'll reiterate it back to just bookend this conversation. What about the one student, you know, that didn't do it? And, and I think that's who we want to be looking at.
Right, right.
So I heard that.
Hundred percent agree, and thank you for all the, I really enjoyed the discussion, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Well, this is like, this is like, like you said, always very informative, very helpful, and, and so much discussion yet still that we need to have in looking at our students and, and the framework of much of the work that we're doing here. So this really kind of, this is what it's all about. This is what we, we set out to do. And, and now we're challenged with all of the, the pieces that we knew would come up and are getting in the way. So we'll continue to work, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks.
So we have another report here, our sustainability report. Mary?
I'm not sure how we'll follow up that report, but we'll give it a shot. Honestly, I think this is the first time I've ever presented with both of these guys, so. A new thing for me. So thank you for letting us give you this presentation tonight. We do have a lot of information for you. We also have a lot of people in the audience who are involved in this initiative. So we'll take some time to give a quick introduction of a few of those people. We want to talk about a few different areas, but we want to give you a little background first on some of the things that go on behind the scenes that we don't talk about all the time, but are always, I'm going to say, at the forefront of, of how we operate the building. So before we go into some of the slides, I just want to give you a little background of some of the things that have gone on here for a while regarding sustainability. The clicker, do you have the clicker? Pete, take it with him? It's, I think it's sitting at his desk. It is? Yeah. So we just wanted to talk about some of the background. As far as we could tell, and, and I bet if we asked Clarence Gregory, we could probably find something even earlier. But the biggest piece we could find going back the farthest is that around nineteen eighty-eight, the district started using an automation control system by a company called Siemens. The system allowed an automatic temperature setting base so that we weren't running heating, cooling fans just at all times. We could set temperatures throughout the buildings, control fans, heating and cooling. We still use that, a form of that system today. It allows us to heat and cool certain areas of the school. You all know how big this school is. So we are, it's pretty cool if you, it's sort of like being in, I don't know, cockpit of an airplane if you see some of the controls that our engineers work with sometimes. We started around two thousand eight, replacing lights in the building. LEDs were not as popular and as affordable then. So my understanding is that we went from what's called a T-twelve fluorescent bulb to a T-eight fluorescent bulb, which reduced the energy by about twenty-five percent. So if you think about all the lights we have in the building, that was, that was definitely an accomplishment. And then about six years later, in two thousand fourteen, the district committed to trying to replace our fluorescent bulbs, you'll see a picture of this coming up in the slides, with LEDs. And so that's an ongoing process. We spend about fifty thousand dollars a year. We work with a vendor to obtain some rebates on those. But just to throw out kind of a staggering number, the South Study Cafe, no, South Technology Center, which is the old Bacon Computer Center, has about two hundred lights itself. So, you know, the lights are not extremely cheap. But if you think about some of these larger areas in the school, just doing one of those areas can be a whole undertaking. One of the other points we wanted to mention is that the district has had a green cleaning program in effect for over a decade, which means our cleaning materials are environmentally sensitive. And we have not used toxic pesticides within ETHS for at least that long. I don't even know how much longer. We have, for over a decade, also taken environmental and sustainable, sustainability issues into consideration when we plan and carry out our capital projects. We've incorporated things like natural lighting where possible, energy rated windows, automated systems, and water energy savings wherever possible. Last couple of quick things before we get into the slides. We have automatic shut-off features on all the water faucets and lighting in student restrooms. We have quite a few of those. And for over a decade, ETHS has dimmed all the hallway lights when classes are in session. So that's just a little bit of background about some of the things that we do. And now we'll get into some of the slides about, so this is more about what we're currently initiating and where we think we're going to be able to go in the future. So as I said, it's not a new initiative for us. We don't talk about it all the time, but we do live it. So we're going to talk about a few areas, nutrition services and growing spaces, energy conservation and savings, a little bit about technology. We'll hear from some students and introduce some people in the audience, and then talk about moving forward. I think, Robbie, you're up first, yep?
Hello once again. So I'm, I'm going to start us off this evening in talking about an initiative that is very exciting to me, and it's very exciting because it was really student-led and student-designed and really student-implemented. And that's a pilot program that we implemented beginning with the second semester, which was January sixth, which is a waste separation project in the South Study Cafeteria and in the terrace. So if you're looking at the picture on the left, that's the waste separation. So you have a bucket for waste liquids, you have a recycle bin, a landfill bin, and then you have a, a green container on the left-hand side that is composting. So that has been set up and been implemented since January sixth, like I said, in the South Study Cafeteria and in the terrace. Couple of people that I really need to thank are, one of the students that's here with us tonight, which is Aldrick. Aldrick is, is here. He's really been instrumental. And then this is not only a student collaboration, but also with one of our parents, Ms. Brodsky, who's also with us tonight as well. We appreciate her expertise on this as well. We appreciate her expertise on this as well. So, how does it work? Well, my job in this was just to support the students and help coordinate what they needed, what they wanted, and what they needed to make it happen, and I'm still doing that. Our students have organized themselves, and they have a sign-up form where they're volunteering every day to monitor the waste separation. So, students are giving up either their lunch, or a free period, or a study hall to come into the South Study Cafeteria to help their peers with waste separation. And with that, we did a waste audit last Monday, and we measured that we were diverting fifty-two and a half pounds of waste from landfills. So, either through the recycling, the compost, and the liquids, fifty-two and a half pounds of that was diverted from landfills, which if you start to add up those numbers over a typical school year, that comes close to about nine thousand pounds over a typical school year that would be diverted from a landfill. So, it's very exciting, and it's, we continue to tweak and adjust as needed, and Aldrick and other students that are helping with that are, have lots of great suggestions, and we meet regularly, we continue to meet regularly to make it work. We are doing this in the terrace, the adult cafeteria lounge as well. We still have, we have farther to go there, but we're committed to making that space work as well. And then hopefully, if we continue to roll this out to our other student cafeterias as well, but we've got to figure out how to make that work first. Next up is, in two thousand seventeen, ETHS went away from using styrofoam lunch trays and instead went to reusable and washable lunch trays. So, if you can imagine with the thousands, and I do mean thousands of lunches that are served here every day, and every one of those had a throwaway tray, the amount of trash and landfill that that was creating. So, it was also a cost of about ten thousand dollars a year for those styrofoam trays. So, of course, there was an initial outlay for the washable trays that you see a rendition of there, the blue, the blue trays. There was an initial outlay of that, but we're quickly making that up. We do have to replace them every once in a while because they disappear somehow, but we, they're definitely being washed and reused every single day. Last year, we started in the adult cafeteria, giving folks that are eating in, in the cafeteria, instead of giving them some sort of disposable plate or bowl. Those are now being used with washable plates and bowls that are being washed in an energy-saving dishwasher, just like our trays are every day. I will point out that there's the tray there is like a royal blue, but our trays are the official ETHS blue, of course.
Sorry. I couldn't find that color on the picture.
Okay. I know many of you attended last fall, the Nutrition Services hosted a get-together in our Planetarium Greenhouse Courtyard to help celebrate the renovation of the greenhouse and our edible acres. And that continues to this day, and it's a partnership among Nutrition Services and the Talking Farm and our urban agriculture classes. And we produce a lot of the food that is served here at school and in those areas. And you can see, over the past five years, we've increased the amount of vegetables product by more than a thousand pounds to over thirty-two hundred pounds of vegetables that are produced at ETHS and then served in our cafeterias. So, we're very proud of that, and we continue to look for ways to, we continue to look for ways to strengthen and bring that program to even more production. And if you go to the next slide-
I just wanted to highlight, before you move on-
Sure.
This is a very important sentence up there, that ETHS is considered a self-sustainable farm-to-school program. That's a very big deal to know.
Thank you. So, one of the ways that we also support our staff through our programming is we, the Nutrition Services Department offers some very starter plants for people at very low cost, so it's a fundraiser for them, but they're done at very low cost. And then, in the summertime, produce boxes are made available where staff can sign up to receive a weekly box of produce that is harvested from one of our edible acres or gardens or the greenhouse.
At a cost.
At a cost, yes. So, it's a fundraiser, but the stuff is not, it is not going to waste even in the summer when we have, when we're serving less lunches. So, it's a way to continue using what we're, what we're producing. Okay. And Mary, I think you're up next.
I wanted to add one thing that's not on the slide, but it was in the board memo. During the eighteen-nineteen school year, the compost was actually weighed, and that amounted to over twenty-one thousand pounds of food waste composted, according to our Nutrition Services Department. So, just wanted to mention that. So, moving on to some of the energy conservation and savings, I want to say before we go through these couple of slides that John Crawford, our lead engineer, is in the audience tonight, as well as Clarence Gregory, our Director of Operations. Say hello.
We, I'm going, so Clarence is now a boss, right, over the department, so I know he does a lot of other things. But I would like to just let you know that, you know, really, I think John has really coordinated a lot of these energy savings efforts, and he has also really, I'm going to say, corralled all of us at the table and some other people into serving on a strategic energy management team in cooperation with a provider, a company by the name of Clear Result, which is sponsored by Nycor and ComEd. And, you know, he's kept us on task with regular meetings. We've received rebates in increments of a thousand dollars. He's come to the table with points of things that we really need to do in this building in order to be a good community partner. And, you know, we all have our daily lives, and this is kind of in addition to our daily lives, even for John. It's a huge building that seven engineers take care of, and so I just want to make sure that you all know that this has really, a lot of this energy saving has been driven by the engineering department and John, our lead engineer in particular. So, you see a picture, a few pictures here of like H-Hall and the lobby area. So, the one in the upper left is a picture that I took right before we started our remodeling, and you can see all the old fluorescent lights. And then, lower left is kind of that same area, but at a different angle. And you can see, not only is there better lighting, it's brighter, but the LEDs have replaced all those fluorescent lights that used to go all the way down H-Hall. That's the picture on the right. I had some before pictures, but there were people in them, and I didn't know if they wanted staff members. Right before we did the big construction, we took some pictures. So, but those of you who remember, I mean, we just had rows and rows of fluorescent lights, and not only has it changed the look, but it's changed our energy usage and it's changed the cost of operating. So, just some fun, quick things. I mentioned our energy management team is in place. We're meeting probably at least once a month, I would say. John has brought some incentive checks to those meetings. I'll get to some numbers in a second on the next slide. But we recently received an award that John brought to our meeting for the most diverse energy team. We didn't know what that meant, so we had to ask them to clarify. And, and we were given that award by the partners, Nycor, ComEd, and Clear Result, because we have the most departments represented on our energy team. So, it's not just a group of engineers sitting around the table or a group of operational people. We have administration, we have IT members, we've had teachers at some of the meetings. We're having another meeting with them this week, you know, principal, and along with engineer and operation representative.
CEO of a business office.
Yeah, administration. You know, the money's there, so I got to come. So, so we really believe that it's a little bit of everyone's responsibility, makes it easier on all of us. Okay? So, just a few numbers. So, I mentioned this energy, strategic energy management program. So, John brought some numbers to our most recent meeting, and in the first six months of that energy program, forty-one thousand natural gas terms were saved. So, so let me say, the building operates primarily on a lot of steam, but also some natural gas. And so, in the first six months, that amounted to about forty thousand dollars in savings. There were different things that were done, setting temperature points in classrooms, and also, you know, fixing some things that needed to be fixed that were, you know, maybe using more energy than needed. In those same six months, as far as the electrical kilowatt-hours, three hundred and twenty-three thousand of those were saved, and that resulted in a thirty-three thousand dollar savings. One of the stories that John told us at our most recent meeting was about steam traps, which I actually saw on a tour today with Clarence. And by replace, they identified some steam traps in all of our basement operations that were broken or faulty, and they identified about fifty of them that they replaced over, I don't, let's say, the school year, the last few months. They did it in-house, I mentioned the seven engineers, and so we saved about twenty-five thousand dollars in installation fees. And then, more importantly to me, the new traps make more efficient use of the water, and so you don't require what John referred to as make-up water for the leaks and steam that's escaping. So, I took a look at a water bill from this period, November first to January first, and compared it to the same period last year. And our savings are approximately a hundred and seventy-nine gallons of water per day, and that amounted to almost six thousand dollars on the most recent January City of Evanston water bill. Water is really expensive in this town, and so to save a hundred and seventy-nine gallons a day, not only is it a great thing for conservation, but it's a great thing for our bottom line. So, we just wanted to mention a couple of quick things on technology. Like I said, our IT department is involved in this initiative as well. Our computers in the student labs are on auto-shut-off, and they go off at night. Our telephone screens shut down, I think, at six PM. You can still use it, you just have to hit a button to activate it. I did not know what this meant, so I had to ask. Server virtualization allows, we have four physical servers that can host over a hundred virtual servers, so that means less hardware, less junk that has to be recycled when it's obsolete. We do recycle old hardware, they're pretty vigorous about that program. A couple of years ago, we implemented a print managed, management system for students, which is called KitPrint. Students can still print in various locations, but they have to actually walk up to printers to release those copies, so we don't have things just printing randomly in most places. It's a walk-up and print release. And then, we have, there's a little typo there, sorry about that, but we have purchased like energy smart hardware, such as lower-energy phones, laptops instead of PCs, which use less energy, and something called Stacks, which is, which again, I'm told is a, is something that is a virtual operation so that we have less hardware overall. Sorry, I'm not the IT, do you know what those things are?
You're not.
Okay. Robbie's over IT, so. So, moving forward, and then Marcus is going to talk about our, some of our collaboration with our student groups. Moving forward, energy savings initiatives will continue. Capital projects will continue to include environmental planning. We plan to continue partnership with community and student groups, such as the Climate Action Team, Sustainability Committee, Collective Resources, Citizens for Greener Evanston, and encourage discussions and planning for incorporation of sustainability initiatives into curriculum wherever appropriate. And I'm sorry, Pete, you mentioned a couple of different areas where that could take place. I just found it, PE, wellness, driver's ed, civics, and biology. Pete's really working, Marcus, with more of the curriculum piece than Robbie and myself. The board is passing a resolution on sustainability. And lastly, can you go to the next slide? Thanks. We have engaged the services of Studio C as a sustainability consultant. Kevin Campbell is in the audience waiting patiently. He is the managing principal. Just a few points about Kevin. Kevin's experience includes a wide range of project types, including K-12 schools, higher education, central libraries, multifamily housing, corporate facilities, and public infrastructure. This is the scaled-down version of Kevin's qualifications. For more than thirty years, Kevin has been at the forefront in developing, implementing, and monitoring systems for the efficient control of program and project information, providing decision-makers and stakeholders the tools they need to execute successful projects. And in addition to his involvement professionally, Kevin contributes his time and talent to many activities to strengthen communities. He regularly participates in design, is it charrettes? All the academic people, is that how you say that? English teacher, charrette? Kevin?
We.
We. And peer reviews for community development and empowerment projects across the country. Oh, it's your eyesight.
Yeah.
I tested it, it's perfectly readable. So, go ahead, Marcus.
Yes, and so, as you know, we've had a number of students who are climate action leaders, and a few of them are here tonight, and I have the honor and the privilege of introducing two of them. First, we will start with ETHS senior, Bella Hubbard, who's going to come with a five-minute presentation. Come on up, Bella.
Thanks, Robbie. Hello, I'll just stall while he, oh, just kidding. Okay.
Yes.
I think it's important, just to start out, by saying how crucial it is that every one of us as decision-makers in this room understand the gravity and the urgency of this crisis. So, here's what I'm saying. That is really, if you walk away with one thing here, this is what I want you to understand. I do only have five minutes, though, so let's hope for the best. Okay, so, when we look up at the sky, it really seems like this extremely infinite and vast thing, but in reality, if we were to turn our cars upward, it would only take us ten minutes to reach the edge of the atmosphere. And in this tiny bubble that we live in, we're dumping a hundred and ten million tons of pollution every single day. So, the important ones that ETHS is really contributing to, and we have a choice not to, are getting our energy from fossil fuels and landfills. So, every time we're throwing food out into landfills, they're rotting, and they're producing methane, which is twenty-five times more potent than your everyday carbon gas. And then, also, we know transportation is a huge one, and many of these other ones, but those are our big focuses today. So, this is a quick review of how the greenhouse effect works. We know that Earth is the Goldilocks planet, because it's not too hot, not too cold, but just right to sustain life, right? And that's because we have this layer of greenhouse gases that is keeping the sun's heat in and letting some of it escape. But as we thicken this layer of greenhouse gases, we're preventing the sun's heat from escaping. This is causing extreme heating all over the world, right? So, it's also causing more frequent, more intense, longer-lasting heat waves, hurricanes, floods, droughts, and fires, which have the greatest impact on those with the fewest resources. So, by the end of this century, we are looking at facing sixty or more days a year where it is too hot to go outside, it is deadly temperatures, and currently, a third of the world's population is facing this deadly heat. So, yesterday, Antarctica was sixty-five degrees outside, so that's not natural. This is also affecting our hydrological cycle, so heating our oceans means more water is evaporating, and it's staying in our atmosphere longer, so when it finally does calm down, it causes these enormous rain bombs like this one, and these huge hurricanes. And so, Hurricane Maria is a clear example of climate racism. Our country had the option to save so many of these lives, and they chose not to. We know if this island had been full of white people, there would have been immediate action. So, Chicago is currently preparing to declare a climate emergency. If any of y'all have been to the lake this summer, you've seen the impact. We are losing our beaches, that's a really small thing, really, on the scale of this climate crisis, but it will reach us, and we are working right now to get Evanston to also declare a climate emergency. Flooding and drought is impacting our food supply, and it's impacting people's livelihoods because they have no way to support themselves. It's leading to mass migration and global instability. We see that with Syria, Honduras, El Salvador, all over the world, and it's causing these huge migrations, and we know that a wall is not going to fight this issue, but the climate policy will. This is also causing fires globally, right, with more droughts, higher temperatures. This is just an image of Australia a few weeks ago. The continent is on fire. Let that just resonate. I mean, that's not natural. Same story is happening in the United States, and as you see here, this is really the typical American response to this crisis. The people with the resources to ignore this crisis are doing so, and many of us are guilty of this, right? So, I really did just blaze through that, but all I want to say is, everyone in this room is here because we care about children, right? Agreed? Yes. And us children are really carrying the burden of this crisis. We need our adults to step up, and we need to understand why we need our adults to step up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bella. And next, I'm gonna ask ETHS junior Louise Bond to come, who has a prepared written statement. Louise?
Okay, I'm gonna pass out some papers. I think I have one short, but this is what I'll be saying. Okay, hello, my name is Louise Bond. As Dr. Campbell said, I'm a junior, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Sustainability Committee, along with Mia Houseworth and Sarika Wyker. The Sustainability Committee is a collective of passionate students, teachers, community members, professionals, and ETHS administrators that is dedicated to working on environmentally responsible curriculum, facilities, energy use, and policy at Evanston Township High School. We are a committee that works with the ETHS staff on sustainability initiatives. This is the first school year that the committee has existed. At the end of last school year, Civic Engagement Committee from the Community Service Club, which I'm a part of, started working with people from Green Team, not Climate Action Team, Student Union, an emerged group, passionate students, and a few administrators to set up a group that could continuously work on sustainability issues at ETHS, and that's how this group came to be. We wanted to unite all individuals and groups that were making efforts toward a greener Evanston and ETHS, because we recognized there were so many simultaneous efforts. Now, today, we have representation from Community Service Club, E-Town Sunrise, Student Union, Climate Action Team, Citizens for Greener Evanston, Collective Resource, The Climate Reality Project, and City of Evanston. So we're really, really happy for that diverse range of representation. We've had four meetings thus far, with our fifth scheduled for the twenty-seventh of February. We always record official minutes at each meeting, so if anyone would like to see them, feel free to email me, and I'll happily send those along. We have also formed subcommittees. That's been an important part of our work so far. In order for committee members and any other community members who wish to get involved and who are particularly passionate for a certain realm of environmentalism, to work together to brainstorm ways to tackle those issues. So the Policy, Curriculum, and Facility Subcommittee are growing strong, and the Energy Subcommittee is planning to meet tomorrow night to get the ball rolling. So the Facility Subcommittee has already had two meetings with administrators and faculty to start making progress on different things, such as the further implementation of the composting and recycling program that y'all heard about, waste audits, recycling bin placement and signage, and teacher training, along with some other things. Curriculum Committee has discussed what it might look like for the climate crisis to be incorporated in curriculum of various existing classes, what spaces that could be possible in, and what inclusive and effective advocacy and education looks like in the near future at ETHS. Going forward, we're extremely excited to keep making progress in individual subcommittees, involving more ETHS staff and community members in the committee's work, working with the City of Evanston, working to communicate our progress and goals, as well as the school's progress on environmental issues, advocating for fund allocation to green initiatives, projects, and infrastructure, and working to shift the overall culture at ETHS toward environmental responsibility.
So our students and staff have been working and have, will continue to work collaboratively on these efforts. As a matter of fact, we have a couple of things that we are gonna set out to do before the end of the school year, with much bigger plans to come the year after, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and thank you to the students. Questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
I'll sit back down.
I was wondering about, are we measuring our greenhouse gas production so that we could start lowering our greenhouse gas production?
John says, no, we are not measuring the greenhouse gas production at this time.
Well, can John or Clarence just come sit at the table?
Come on up, John. You can have my spot.
Hey, John.
Hi.
Hi, John.
Hi. We're not measuring it right now, though.
Is that something that might be a stated goal in some of our-
Yeah, that's definitely something we want to do.
Sustainability work? Because it seems like most of our energy is coming from natural gas and so-called, you know, dirty fossil fuel resources. And so I think, you know, first of all, I think it needs to be measured so that we can sort of see if there's any progress in our other initiatives, if we're reducing that pollution. And then I wondered about, like, when I think of it on a residential level, we have the opportunity to purchase green energy. If that's something that the high school has ever looked into, or are there any opportunities for that?
Yeah, they just signed a two-year agreement. I don't know if they signed it or not yet. But from 2022 to 2024, we buy in the future. And I believe it's fifty percent is gonna be guaranteed green energy.
And who's that purchased from?
Through Constellation Energy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we can check on the numbers and get back to you. I mean, it is, I believe it's significantly more expensive.
To purchase green energy?
Yeah. So, but we can report back on that and find out the numbers and the timeframe. That, it's actually handled by someone who's not here tonight at the meeting. It's handled by our capital improvement director.
Yeah, I completely respect, like, the challenge of trying to sort of retrofit this one-hundred-year-old building to be sustainable and, you know, change our different ways of getting power and energy, and even just like leaking windows and, you know, things like that. But I think what we do have is we do have acreage, and we do have a lot of rooftop space. And I wonder about low-cost or no-cost solar power and other things, where you lease from companies, they sell back the electricity to you at a discounted rate. Things like that, that don't require a lot of upfront money from the high school.
We have had, and probably will continue to have, lots of conversations about solar power here. In fact, Robbie and Kevin and I discussed that last week, just even though, you know, Kevin has just, we've just started that relationship, but we've already had a discussion on it. I will tell you that one of the, we had a big presentation, I'm gonna say his name incorrectly, but his first name is Jonathan. Thank you. A couple of years ago, with the Green Team and a teacher by the name of Jill Weiner, very extensive solar presentation, especially regarding some incentives that were available at the time. One of the challenges that we have here is that roofs that have the maximum solar exposure, because they don't all have great solar exposure, the ones that were identified in that study, quite honestly, I think only one of four was a newer roof. So every year, we do different roofs on the building, and we have to attack the ones that are the worst and that are leaking the worst. And so there wasn't a great matchup. I'm not saying that's the only reason, but it certainly is a factor that we have to consider in this hundred-year-old, almost hundred-year-old building, that several of the roofs with the best exposure are not the roofs that have been in line for replacing them, and you'd want to do that before you explored it. So, but it is a conversation that I think we'll be continuing to have, and Kevin's gonna help us with that. I just ran into Jonathan a couple of meetings ago, so it's definitely at the forefront.
Because I was just thinking, there's so many things that we do as a school that are so cutting-edge and so trend-setting and doing it ahead of everybody else, and I think sending a message to our students about valuing their future and making a statement and saying, like, we're gonna do what we can to protect your future, because clearly, they're panicking. And I'm panicking, too. And doing what we can to say, like, we will prioritize your future. We're forming them from children to adults. We're turning them into their whole person with all their opportunities here. And, you know, the question is, like, what's their future gonna look like, that they can sort of grow into as far as the climate risks? So, I mean, like, honestly, what I would envision would be ETHS really saying, like, this is what we're gonna do, and making it visible to the community, making it well-known to our students and the community, using parts of our beautiful lawn for sustainable solar power and other types of alternative energy. And that would be the face of ETHS, like, look what they're doing. The community drives down Dodge, drives around, and can see what we're doing. And I, because I think the City of Evanston has created their zero-carbon by 2050, and I don't know if we have a stated goal of what we're gonna look like at 2050, if we'll be in line with the city's zero-carbon by then. But, and again, I empathize with the structure itself and how limiting that can be, but I think if we utilize the resources in town, the expertise of people who know most about renewable energies, there has to be a way to do this at a lower to no cost to the high school. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, thank you, Liz. Other questions? Comments? All right, well, thank you, team. Continue to have this conversation, talk about this. Thank you much. Okay. Looks like we are doing a little transition here. All right, so moving on with our agenda, Dr. Beavis, we're at comments from the public?
We have two comments from the public. Let me just read my introduction to public comment, and then we will hear from our folks. First of all, speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they've signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time on my phone, and I will signal you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy, and I'll let you know it's time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that that becomes necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern. Please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individual are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. All right. Our first public comment is from Charlene Niomo. Sure. Endona, you go right ahead. So what I'll do is, as you, you know, I'll let you know when there's two minutes, when there's one minute, and I'll do my best to keep everybody on time.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Endona Mubayi, and I just wanna, I wrote my statements down. I'd like to preface my statements with the fact that I currently have a junior here at ETHS and a freshman. My son is in all honors and AP courses, and my daughter, who was on the honor roll at Haven, is currently in all regular courses. And my statements are basically addressed more, it's both to the board and Team ASAP, which I believe they've all gone. But the number of students has increased, but the scores have decreased, which simply means that though there has been a conscious decision to increase the percentage of Black slash African-American students, there's not been an increase in academic support at the District 65 level, in my opinion. I learned last year that the academic gap between white and Black slash African-American students was due to an issue with literacy by Eban, which is the ETHS Black Advocacy Network, not simply the ability to read, but comprehension of the English language, which should be addressed at the District 65 level with added support once they arrive at ETHS, such as tutors, AM support, lunch, free period, and/or after-school support. There's also a lack of preparedness for the standard courses, let alone the AP coursework, which means that many of the students testing below the three level, which I believe is about fifty-nine percent, should more than likely not be taking that particular course at the AP level, which is setting them up to fail. The students would be better off taking a course at grade level and receiving a grade of B or C than an AP course and receiving a D and decreasing their overall GPA. Regarding class diversity, in my opinion, a child who is not secure with their identity and abilities would be negatively impacted by the lack of racial diversity in the classroom, and that we should not make the assumption that all Black students are uncomfortable because they are not a part of a racial majority within the classroom, which could be addressed when having the discussion on a more inclusive curriculum that highlights the accomplishments of Black people worldwide, as opposed to the constant reminder of slavery as a means of indoctrination.
One minute.
I'm done.
Okay. Next is Charlene Niomo.
Well, my daughter was the third generation to go here. My grandchildren are the fourth generation to attend the Evanston school system. I'm proud, I wish, you know, I wanted to say how proud I am of Evanston, but since I have to be done in three minutes, I can't do the proper presentation and give the compliments that I'd like to give. I'm very proud to be a part of this community. I'm especially proud that my grandchildren are here. This doesn't mean that there are not some criticisms that I think are important. It's very important that, especially here in Evanston, because I believe that Evanston can create a conversation to impact the national conversation and have a great impact on what is happening in the Western world, which we, this country is the leader of. My grandparents used to call those countries the old countries, and this is the new, this is the new country. This is the new country. Everyone here is here for a reason, and they're moving beyond the restrictions of the countries that they came from. It's extremely important that we focus on truth, and this is Black History Month. And this is an opportunity to tell the truth about what, who African people really are.
Two minutes.
It was the Africans who told Columbus how to get over here. And during the time that he was doing, wanting to do this exploring, there had been a person killed for heresy in Europe before that, because they believed that the world was flat. So somehow, he found out that the Africans had been trading with this part of the world since before Christ. And somehow, he got there, and they gave him, let him know about the rivers in the sea, which is also called the Guinea Current. So I'm here because I'm just, I'm a bit disappointed when I look at the, what was being presented for Black History Month, and I thought I might start by coming to this meeting, sharing some information. The person who was the father of Russian literature was a kidnapped African by the name of Alexander Pushkin. He was the kidnapped grandson of Hannibal, who lived in the second century before Christ, and who was the person who crossed the Alps and-
One minute.
-overran Rome. Algebra, astronomy, astrology, and a lot of other things came from Africa. But all we know about is the black thug. And Jesus was changed from a person of color and Mary to facilitate the transatlantic slave trade. Until then, they were accepted as people of color. So this lying didn't start with Trump. It started a long time ago in an old country. Our children need to know the truth, and they need to know the truth about European ancestors, too.
Twenty seconds.
Who came here, escaped, they couldn't own land. They were at the mercy of the aristocracy, and that is, in some ways, the same thing that's happening to some of these people who are fleeing here from South America. This country has the ability and the, I think, the will to change everything that's going on, and it has been managed in the past in a way that there was more peace. But if we keep lying and going along with these other things, we're not giving our kids a fair chance. All the kids know the truth, not only about who we are, but who they are as well, and what we've all brought to the table. and what we've all brought to the table.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have three FOIA reports in the packet. Any comments about those, Dr. Beavis?
Uh, no, three, there are three FOIAs in the packet, and the responses are included.
Okay. Board committee reports, do we have reports that we'd like to share, board?
I can do a tiny, quick EdRed.
Okay.
So as the board knows, the legislative dinner was a couple of weeks ago, and Senator Colleton, who just retired, was the speaker. It's very interesting, and Gretchen, Pat, Eric, and I were able to go. The members' meeting was last week. There was a presentation about data-informed curriculum and instruction. Things aren't too crazy in the legislature at the moment, but just wait, they will get crazy. So highly recommend that you continue to read Sarah's e-newsletter from the floor to your door, because she gives great updates on legislation and action that boards, school boards, need to take to support good decision-making. So, thank you.
Great. All right. Echo, student, student board report.
Hello. So I'm gonna start it off with just talking about the ETHS students who just got back from Japan yesterday. So that was one of the exchange programs through the Japan, the Japanese-language classes. And so they were there for two weeks, and I believe Japanese students either have already come or will be coming to ETHS. Next, the SOAR Conference is this week, on February 12th and 13th, which is an opportunity for students to have two full days of meaningful courageous conversations about race with folks from all different walks of life. And actually, there will be other schools present at this SOAR Conference as well, which is a really unique opportunity that has happened in the past, but is different than the Fall SOAR Conference. As already mentioned by the public comment, it's Black History Month. Last week, we had a Spirit Week, but a really exciting opportunity is a pop-up shop for young entrepreneurs that is happening. And I'm excited to see all the amazing things that my peers are, are selling and working on, and it's a really cool opportunity for students to showcase the hard work that they're doing outside of their classes, that will also carry through into their futures as entrepreneurs. Also, students are busy planning summits, and so all the different summits have students on their boards, and planning time is really busy right now. And the summits, as you all know, but just to reiterate, are spaces to affirm their students and the identities that they hold. This is not a student, a summit, but part of the social consciousness series is the Becoming Anti-Racist and Decentralizing Whiteness Workshop for students, which also has a collective of students working on the committee to plan that event as well. And then finally, I was going to mention the myriad sustainability efforts led by students, but that's been talked about tonight already. So, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Widdispoon?
I'm just gonna share a couple of quick highlights, that the winter play is this week, the 13th, 14th, and 15th. It's the Wolves, and it'll be in the upstairs theater at 7:30 PM for people who are interested. The Class of 2024 is encouraged to attend incoming freshman sports and activities fair night. It'll be next Wednesday, February the 19th. It's at 6:30 PM. This is, we've been doing it in recent years, has proved to be a big event, and so all of our eighth-grade students, eighth-grade students and their families, who are going to be incoming to ETHS, can come and learn about our many clubs, activities, and sports here at ETHS. A reminder to the board, as well as our community, that the ETHS Foundation is hosting its annual benefit on Saturday, February the 29th. It's, this year's event is called Wild for ETHS, and it helps support the enhancements that we're able to do because of our foundation. So really encourage everybody to get there on Saturday, the 29th. And the only other thing I want to point out, because it's, it's always an important part of the year, online sign-up for spring conferences opens next week, February the 18th. Families may sign up all the way until February the 26th. That ends at 3 PM, and the conferences will be on Thursday, February 27th. They're five-minute conferences, and there are slots available in the afternoon and the evening. And that concludes my report.
The year is going very quickly. Yes. Okay, we are at our finance committee reports, the mid-year budget review.
Mary and Kendra coming up.
We know how much you guys look forward to this riveting part of the meeting, so we'll get right into it.
Who took the clicker this time? Oh, thank you. You took it back to your chair the last time.
Okay, so we'll be going through the mid-year budget review. And so for the mid-year budget review, this covers July 1 through December 31, halfway through our fiscal year. And so we'll be discussing the different funds, and some, we'll go into little details about each of the different funds, and we'll also just let you know that as a overview for the budget, things are looking, like they're looking well for the mid-year, mid-year point, and that overall expenditures are in line with budgeted projections. This year, the overall expenditures at December 31 were 48.09%, .09%, which is less than the 50.66% that it was at last year. So that's the overall picture that we have, and then we'll go a little bit deeper into the different funds. And we'll also, after talking about the funds, discuss some budget concerns as well as we move forward. So for the education fund, the education fund has the lion's share of the funds, I guess you could say, because it represents about 77% of our budget. And so that's where the bulk of our budget resides. And for revenues, we were at 46.84% at the mid-year point, and for expenditures, at 46.34%. And so when it comes to revenues, there's a slight increase there. Last year, at this point, we were at 46.1%. And so we find that in the different funds, we were getting in property taxes at a, at a increased rate compared to last year. And so for that reason, we'll, we find that the revenues are slightly outpacing the revenues of fiscal year eight, fiscal year 19, sorry. Thinking about what last year was. Already moving on. And so for the expenditures, those are right on schedule as well, with what would be expected at this point in the year, 46.33, 34%. And that's just slightly above last year. We're at 45.6, so still keeping in line with previous years and trends. For the TORT Fund, the revenues are 50.47%, and the expenditures are at 100%. But that is what's to be expected in the TORT Fund. Those payments come out in the beginning of the year, and then we're completely done making those payments until next fiscal year. So the TORT Fund is actually set up this way. It's not any error why 100% of the money has been spent at this point. That is by design. And for the Operations and Maintenance Fund, revenues are at 46.4%, and expenditures are 49.17%. So for the expenditures, these expenditures are slightly above what we had last year, which was 46.5% at this point. And just drilling into that, we find that there were just more requests. We know that we have a very old building, and in a previous presentation, we talked about this building being 100 years old. And so a lot of times, there are some projects that may come up, emergency projects that come up in the operations fund, but also just requests in upkeep of the building, in painting, in carpeting, things of that nature. And sometimes we find that there are more rooms that need to be cared for in some given years, and more projects that have to happen. So expenditures still within reason, less than that 50% mark, but just a touch above where we were last year at this point.
And before you go on, something I just thought about that Kendra and I didn't have a chance to talk about. You might remember there was a large repair that we started right around the end of October, I think, on one of our two main steam pipes, that actually had become faulty last year and set off some alarms that we didn't want to set off again. And so we did already undertake a pretty large project, that I believe that was well over $100,000. So that makes sense to me, that those would be a little higher.
For the Bond and Interest Fund, revenues are at 47.69%, and expenditures are 80.78%. So similar to the TORT Fund, I want to point out that the expenditures are clearly greatly, they appear to be greatly outpacing the revenues at, at this mid-year point, but that, too, is by design, in that in December, December 1st, we make all of our principal payments, and then the bulk of our interest payments for our, our bonds. And then come April, we'll make more payments, but they'll just be smaller interest payments. And so this is just what we would expect at this point, that we would have the bulk of the budget for that fund spent at this point, and then we would just see some smaller payments later in the year. For the Transportation Fund, revenues are coming in at 62.79%, and this is ahead of last year's pace as well. And expenditures, happy to report, are actually less than last year. So we've actually seen, we saw a decline in the expenditures for the Transportation Fund last year due to special ed rates, us constantly working very diligently to reduce the spending for special, special ed transportation as best we can. And as we continue to continue, continue to try to mitigate the issues with the fees that we have regarding special ed transportation, we've had some more success, and it's now at 32.24% for expenditures, which is less than last year. For the IMRF Fund, revenues were, are at 44% and expenditures at 39.98%. And so for this fund, also within budget, and expenditures also within the expected range as well. And regarding the Capital Improvement Fund, we, we've had some revenue from the Geometry and Construction Home that was received in November. The remainder of the revenue in that fund is through the donations that were secured from the ETHS Foundation. And so, and then later this year, we'll also be expecting some more revenue from bonds. Mary, do you, do you want to say one day?
Yeah.
Okay. And then as far as expenditures, those are in target with our projections. The expenditures that we've had thus far are primarily related to the completion of the 2019 projects.
Okay. That's the end of kind of looking at where we are for all the funds for the year so far. Just a couple of things, nothing really new here that we wanted to point out as far as concerns. State payments are usually slow, but we, our biggest source of state funding, which is the evidence-based funding, which replaced general state aid a few years ago, that typically runs on time, so that's good. We can always depend on that coming in. We are continuing to see a delay in federal revenues for the fiscal year, but since we don't have cash flow issues, we're able to kind of ride out those delays, and, and there's nothing that's horribly late, they just typically both run a little slow. Other concerns, as you all know, there's a proposal for progressive income tax, and from everything that we've heard, that'll probably be tied to some form of a property tax freeze. How that'll look is, is still, I think, anyone's guess. There's a very large committee, and at the EdRed meeting last week, they talked about how they're not getting a whole lot done. So I think a lot remains to be seen, but the, the one theme that I think we keep hearing is that there will be some sort of property tax freeze in order to get that progressive income tax across the line. So more to be seen. Good news for us as far as property tax revenues, the current CPI, which we generally receive in December for the year before, is 2.3%, which is up from 1.9% last year. So as you might remember, our property tax levy can increase by the amount of the Consumer Price Index. And Kendra and I were talking earlier today, I would say this is probably the highest CPI, Eric, you'd probably remember, too. I'd say six or seven years. We had a couple of years of 2.1, last year was 1.9, we had a .8, .7. So it has been trending up, took a little dip last year, and we're at 2.3% for this year. Concerns always in, in the back of our minds, just because no one said it won't happen, is the pension shift that they've been talking about for a while. Haven't heard much actively on it in a little while, but it, it's always been kind of a, we'll have to have a Plan B should that start to come down from the state. And in that case, we, we're always refining our projections, but should anything like that come down, or property tax actually make some headway, we'll have to continue to refine those projections. We are going into the sectioning process. I say "we," but it's not really us. We, we sit in on some of the after meetings. That's where they place students in classes for next year. The nice thing is, from what I understand, the enrollments are evening out a little bit. They're a little flatter. And something I hadn't thought of, but was explained to me, is that we're no longer replacing an outgoing class of 750 students with an incoming class of 900. We have kind of four large classes, and so as one rolls out, a similar class size rolls in, and so that helps us not have to increase staffing levels. So before we get to questions, if there are any, I just wanted to say a few words about the next item in the packet, which is a really long-titled item, a resolution with a label that was required by our attorneys. And I'd like to say that Elizabeth Hennessy, our advisor regarding our debt and bonds, is in the audience, waiting patiently as well. And, and we, you'll see in the packet, I'm sure you've already seen it, but we are requesting approval for a little bit different, something a little bit different than the, the typical debt that we have issued before in the way of bonds. You all know that we're subject to debt limits, and there's something called Debt Service Extension Base, which limits how much debt we can extend. So there is an instrument called a debt certificate that districts that have a favorable credit rating, which we have the most favorable credit rating you can get, have used as a tool. Our neighbors to the north recently used it with really good results. And so while these debt certificates are subject to overall debt extension limits, they're not subject to that Debt Service Extension Base. And so it's a way to borrow money, but not take a full 20 years to pay it back. It would be a more accelerated schedule over 10 years. It's basically using just some of the money from the increase in property taxes that we've seen from the Tiff District that was recently retired. The one option is just to take that approximately million and a half dollars and put that into the capital fund. But if we were to issue these debt certificates, we can sort of get more bang for our buck and pay it back over time, and still have a little bit of money at our disposal to use in the capital fund, but also have it on hand should something come around with the, the pension shift. So there are two ways to do it, a public sale and a private sale, and right, economic conditions now have made it cheaper and more lucrative to do a private sale, because districts like ours with good credit ratings are a good risk for banks, and so you accept actually bids from banks. And if you don't like them, no harm, no foul, you throw them all out, and you go to a public sale, which is more like a bond sale that we typically would do. But again, with these debt certificates that have a quicker payback. So we are looking for board authorization to plan to do that in the next couple of months. And ironically, sort of ironically, with the situation in China, it has affected some aspects of the global economy. So in the time between, when Liz and I first started talking about this a couple of weeks ago, it shifted so that the public sale became a little more lucrative because of some things that were going on in the economy. But the resolution would allow for us to do whatever- But the resolution would allow for us to do whatever's more advantageous at that time and cheaper for us to borrow money with, which would be either a public sale or a private offering to multiple banks. So, Liz is here to answer technical questions, should you have them on the resolution. But it's just a different way of financing our capital improvements. And it is a good option for a district that's a good credit risk. Maybe not for everyone, because you wouldn't get those same bids. But it's a way of working around that really limiting debt service extension base, but it doesn't violate our overall debt statutory limits.
Liz, did I get that okay?
Yes.
Anything you want to add before we move on? Unless there's questions?
Just answering questions. And the good news is that, you know, this debt certificates are not...
Can you turn your microphone on?
Do not increase taxes to the taxpayers. You're paying them out of your existing revenues. And specifically, as Mary mentioned, the TIF revenues, the annual payments for, are about $550,000 a year over 10 years. So, it's using about a third of that $1.5 million that you're getting from the TIF expiration.
I'll remind the board, this is our regular cycle. Every other year, we sell about $5 million worth of bonds, and that's what keeps our capital improvement program going.
But sometimes, in those every-other-year periods, it's really a squeeze to try to get as much as we need and stay under that limitation. So, Liz has kind of helped us figure out, you know, we have some large projects that we've been kind of working on the last couple of years, and I think they're going to be out there for a few more years. And then, I feel like we've updated so many facilities, things might calm down a little bit. I don't know. But this is a way to really continue to make a lot of progress on those projects and be smart about the money for them. So, if you have any questions on them, I know the mid-year budget review is kind of boring. It's statutorily required, but things look pretty good. They make sense.
Mary, in your business, boring is good, remember?
That's exactly right.
It's really funny, but it makes me really proud to sit here and listen to someone else rattle off these really boring numbers. I'm sure Bill felt that way about me. I'm like, oh, someone else who actually likes the numbers. It's refreshing. But also, if you have any questions about that resolution on the debt certificates, we'd be happy to answer those.
Yep. Any questions from the board? No questions?
I just want to thank Liz. She's been advising us for a number of years. But thank you for bringing this financing structure to us. It just makes so much sense right now.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, we are at action. And the first action is that long title that Mary just...
We can all read it.
So, I won't read it all. Can we have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Wadde.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next item is the Resolution Regarding Climate Action and Sustainability. And Stephanie's going to read that for us.
Resolution Regarding Climate Action and Sustainability for Evanston Township High School, District 202, Cook County, Illinois. Whereas Township High School District 202, Cook County, Illinois, the district recognizes climate change as a major threat locally and globally. And whereas the district believes it is imperative to have coordinated regional and national effort to address the challenges of climate change and implement consistent sustainability practices throughout the region. And whereas the district has a longstanding history of sustainability initiatives dating back to at least 1988. And whereas the district believes that climate change is not a partisan issue and that local, state, and national decision-makers should be guided by the best available science. And whereas the Board of Education of Township High School District 202, Cook County, Illinois, recognizes and understands the significant negative impact that rapid and ongoing climate change has on America's schools, students, and their communities. And whereas the Board of Education of Township High School District 202, Cook County, Illinois, celebrates existing past district sustainability initiatives such as A. Heating/Cooling Automated Systems dating back to 1988; B. Use of water, steam to prepare food and heat/cool facilities rather than extensive use of natural gas; Replacement of thousands of fluorescent bulbs with energy-efficient LED lights; Implementation of a green cleaning program which utilizes environmentally sensitive cleaning products; E. Utilizing automatic shut-off controls for water and lighting in student restrooms; F. Consideration of environmental impacts and energy reduction in all capital projects wherever possible. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School District 202, Cook County, Illinois, will continue to support and identify additional sustainability initiatives to include all of the following. A. Continued energy savings through reduction in use and participation in energy savings partnerships with providers. B. Continued consideration of environmental impacts and sustainability when undertaking capital projects. C. Continued reduction in food waste and proper classification of food waste into appropriate categories for proper disposal. D. Participate in composting programs for food waste. E. Reduce water usage wherever possible. F. Aggressively pursue replacement of existing fluorescent lighting with LED lighting. G. Reduce usage of paper by reducing, by reducing number of copies produced. And H. Encourage ongoing discussions and planning for incorporation of sustainability initiatives into curriculum wherever appropriate, including in PE, wellness, drivers, education, civics, and biology.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Now, we are at the Women in History Month Resolution to be read by Gretchen.
Women's History Month, March 2020. The National Women's History Alliance theme for 2020 is "Valiant Women of the Vote." The 2020 theme, "Valiant Women of the Vote," celebrates the women who have fought for women's right to vote in the United States. In recognition of the centennial of the 19th Amendment, we will honor women from the original suffrage movement, as well as 20th and 21st century women who have continued the struggle fighting against poll taxes, literacy tests, voter roll, purges, and other more contemporary forms of voter suppression to ensure voting rights for all. Throughout our history, women have dedicated their lives to achieving equal rights for all Americans. They envisioned a society where women could pursue a formal education, start a business, serve in the military, or run for elected office. The example of each of these women motivates successive generations to aspire to greatness and to stand tall in the face of adversity. We remember all the American women, past and present, who have inspired and empowered today's women to advocate for their beliefs and pursue their dreams without hesitation. American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements such as the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. During Women's History Month, we recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, grandmothers, aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. The President of the United States has proclaimed March 2020 as Women's History Month to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history accomplishments and contributions of American women. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Women's History Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Motion to adopt, please.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. All right, so now we are at the Consent Agenda, which consists of release for public information minutes of closed session from July 2019 to December 2019, and the destruction of closed session tapes. Approval of district landscaping bid. Approval of roof replacement and facade renovation bid. Approval of cooperative purchase of outdoor track surface. Approval of minutes from January 13, 2020, closed session minutes, January 13, 2020, regular meeting, January 23, 2020, special meeting. Approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointment to staff exempt, change in status, educational stipends, leave of absence, maternity, resignations exempt, nutrition services, retirement certified, and an addendum, appointment to staff, and support staff. Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second? I have one before you do the roll call. Tiny little change. I just noticed it. In the minutes of the regular meeting for January 13, 20, I am identified as both moving and seconding the consent agenda on that evening. So, I just, I'm not sure who did what. But if we could just, I don't want to be accused of trying to do something funny there. So, if we could make that small tweak, and if...
We'll have to figure that out, yes. We might just have to watch it.
So, I make that amendment to the motion?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know if we need a second on the amendment.
No, but...
With that change, with that change, we can do the roll call.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, do we have any old or new business that the board would like to present? If not, could I have a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.